Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. I will call the 2017 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Acton to order. My name is Peter Ashton, and I am your elected town moderator. And it's my pleasure to be here this evening. Hope the crowd will fill out as we progress tonight. For those of you who have been to town meeting before, as you entered this evening, you probably noticed a few changes. Some minor, and there are a couple that are going to be somewhat significant that we'll get into a little bit later, like electronic voting. My goal is that these changes will hopefully make town meeting more efficient, encourage more debate, and ultimately, as I look out at this relatively empty auditorium, encourage and attract greater attendance. Town meeting, as you know, is the legislative branch of town government, and we're sitting here in session voting on various motions relating to budgets, bylaws, borrowings, and other matters. This year, the warrant includes 37 articles, including 17 on the consent agenda. At our pre-meeting last Thursday evening, I was informed that at least a couple of the consent items will probably be pulled, and when we come to them, I will explain the procedure and rules for handling those. Highlights of this year's town meeting include appropriations exceeding about $90 million for town and school operations, several proposed zoning changes, a proposal for tax increment financing, and four non-binding resolutions, one dealing with our democratic process, and three dealing with our water resources. There is a lot to discuss, but I am hopeful that we can certainly complete our business in two nights. How many of you are here to town meeting for the first time? Could you show your hands? Very good. Thank you. Welcome. Hope you'll find this an interesting and rewarding experience. Since there are some changes this year, let me briefly review the rules of debate and how we will proceed through the warrant. First, please ensure that all your cell phones are on silent. Computers and electronic devices are allowed as long as they are silenced. Wi-Fi information was provided on the screen, and you can see that right here. My job as moderator is simply to preside over town meeting and to make sure that town meeting is fair, open, and civil. Civility is not an option. I expect that everyone will be listened to in a respectful fashion. While we may disagree, let's not be disagreeable with one another. Furthermore, one part of being civil is that there should be no applause or booing during discussion of articles. On my part, I will do my best to exercise good faith, and I intend that my actions will be reasonable and fair. Parliamentary procedure at town meeting is governed by mass general law. Town meeting time, a handbook of parliamentary process prepared by the Massachusetts Moderators' Association, and I guarantee you read only by moderators, as well as our town charter, bylaws, and past customary practice. Many of these rules and procedures are described at pages 79 through 81 of the warrant. More detail is also provided on the town website under the heading of Town Meeting. This year, additional information, including the PowerPoint presentation, some videos, and other information, was made available on the town website at the end of last week so that you town meeting members can have that information to help prepare for this meeting. To ensure an efficient town meeting, it is incumbent on the presenters to be prepared to make succinct, on point, and clear presentations. It is also incumbent on you, the voters, to also be prepared. I'm trying to help you do that by making more information available ahead of the meeting. You all should have a copy of the warrant, which is the agenda for town meeting, but you should also know, as I'm sure most of you are aware, that what we actually vote on are motions, so that it is important that you listen to the motion, and it will be displayed on the screen. At the pre-town meeting last Thursday, presenters generally indicated that they would take between four and eight minutes in giving their presentations. That resulted after a little arm twisting. There are a few where I have allotted up to 12 minutes due to their complexity, the amount of money at stake, or the fact that they will be covering more than one article with their presentation, although obviously we'll be voting on the motion separately. For each motion, I will announce the amount of time that we have agreed on for the presentation. It will be shown on the clocks up here, and I have asked the presenters to stick to those time limits. The timers will aid everyone in knowing when the time has elapsed, and I will certainly exercise my prerogative to indicate so to the presenters. Recommendations by the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and other town boards are also limited to two minutes. After the initial presentations on each motion, I will open it up to questions and debate among town meeting members. As you can see, we have the usual pro and con microphones, which are so marked, so that if you're debating in favor of the motion, please use the pro mic and vice versa. If you have a question, and questions are always encouraged, you may use any microphone. We will also have a portable microphone, I believe. For those of you who are unable to approach one of the mics, please raise your hand, and we will see that the portable mic is brought to you. I will recognize speakers as they stand at the microphones. Although I know many of you, I do not know all of you, and I will simply refer to you as the speaker at microphone number blank, so don't be offended. I do this because, one, I don't know everyone, and I don't want those who I don't know to feel slighted. More importantly, it helps the TV cameraman figure out which microphone to focus the camera on. But please keep your comments limited to no more than two minutes. This is very important to keep the debate on point, to ensure fairness to all, and to keep the meeting moving at an efficient pace. Before we move on to do a quick tutorial on our new innovation, electronic voting, let me note one other change this year. For tomorrow night, I have asked the selectmen and the town manager that we begin the meeting at 6:45 PM rather than the usual 7 o'clock time slot so that the town manager can make the lally employee awards at that time. Nevertheless, I encourage all of you to come at 6:45 for these awards, but the thought is, by starting a little bit early, we should be able to commence our regular business at about the 7 o'clock hour. We ready to try this electronic voting? When you checked in this evening, you should have received one of these gizmos, a clicker. And you should have also received, I believe, some instructions to help you understand how to use it. No? Okay. Well, that's why we're going to go through a couple of run-throughs. We will not use the clickers for all votes because a voice vote count is the quickest. But where a two-thirds majority is required, or where I cannot discern the results from a voice vote, we will move directly to electronic voting. The clicker is battery-powered. As you can see, has an orange on-off button and has several keys numbered A through E and a display, except for the ones with Braille labels. In voting, we will only be using two keys, the A key and the E key. The A key is for a yes vote, and the E key at the bottom is for a no vote. Because these systems are used for a variety of purposes, particularly multiple-choice voting in schools, there are multiple keys. We were unable to find a clicker that only had two keys. Business idea for somebody. A few rules. As much as you might like, you may not keep the clicker overnight. You'll have to turn it in at the end of the evening and get a new one if we do continue another night. The clickers are pre-programmed and tested by our IT staff to ensure proper operation, and this is done before each night of town meeting. However, you should keep the clicker with you in the auditorium at all times, and only turn it on when instructed to do so, to save battery life. If you need to leave the auditorium during the meeting, you must bring the clicker with you and have it checked at the door. You will be given a card that you will turn back in when you return to the auditorium to get your clicker back. We do this to protect the integrity of the voting because, basically, we don't want you leaving your clicker in your seat and having someone else vote for you. When I determine that a vote by electronic means is required, I will announce that we need to take a vote electronically. The motion slide will be put up on the screen. The timers will then be set to 30 seconds. Then, I will instruct the voters to gently press the orange power button to turn on their clickers. The word "ready" will appear on the display indicating that the power is on. Then, I will ask if everyone has their clickers on. If there are difficulties, raise your hand, and we have tellers, as well as the IT department folks here, available to assist you. Once everyone has their clickers on and is ready to go, I will state that we are about ready to open the voting window for a period of 30 seconds. The timers will be visible, and voters will have 30 seconds to cast their votes. The system records the last button that you press within that 30-second window, so you can change your vote, should you desire, while the voting window is open. Again, you should press A for a yes or a i vote, and E for a no or nay vote. If you wish to abstain, simply do nothing. And also, do not press the send button, which I think says send. Don't need to do that. The clicker will confirm your vote either by vibrating for the Braille clicker, or the display will show the letter you have pressed along with a checkmark indicating that your vote has been received down here by the IT folks. If you do decide to abstain after casting either a yea or nay vote, simply push one of the other B, C, or D buttons to cancel your vote. We are only counting the A or yes and the E or no votes. If the vote is interrupted during the 30-second window, we will stop the vote, deal with the interruption, and then resume voting. At the end of the 30-second voting window, I will announce that the voting window is For those of you who have decided not to use a clicker, and I'm looking at the group up there in the corner, and at the moment, there is no one, which heartens my soul greatly. If there are people up there, I will ask you to vote by standing, and we have tellers who will do the counting. Those will be tallied and will be brought down to the IT folks and added to the results of the electronic vote. The results of the vote will be shown on the screen, but I will still be required by law to declare the result of the vote. I'm hopeful that this process will run smoothly once we have taken a few votes, but I recognize that people will have questions, and we have tellers and other members of town staff here who are here to help answer your questions. I do want to take this opportunity to thank our IT department and town staff for doing a tremendous job in researching and finding this system. We're releasing it this year to see how it works, and they've done an exceptional job in getting us ready to embrace this new technology. Thank you, folks. Ready to do some voting? Let's do a couple of practice votes to see if we all understand how this works. So we're going to do a couple of strictly hypothetical motions. So we have a motion here to see if hypothetically you might increase the paltry salary that the moderator makes each evening of $20 and raise it to $100. This is strictly hypothetical, believe me. But I do know that this will likely result in great exercise of the E button, so... Please turn your clickers on by pressing gently the orange button. Has everyone done that? Any problems? Any questions? Fantastic. Okay. We will now prepare to vote. Got the 30-second window up there. I will now declare that the voting window is open. I declare the voting window is now closed. We will hopefully get some results here shortly. I'll see whether I should run again next year or not. Ah-ha. I'm ready to retire now. Thank you all. Shall we do another one? Let's just make sure everybody's comfortable with this. I think this is an important one, anyway. So here's another question. This is really a question more than a motion. So if you volunteer for the town, would you please press yes or A on the button? You may also abstain, or you can press no or E button. You still should have all your clickers on, so are you all ready to vote? Okay. Please go ahead. I declare the voting window is open. I declare the voting is closed. That is a very impressive number of votes, volunteers for the town, 131, or 57% of the town meeting members. I would ask the town meeting give a very good round of applause for the great work that our volunteers do. Thank you. This town really does run on its volunteers, and we certainly appreciate your service. I think we're ready to progress. So finally, before we begin with Article 1, I think it's important for you to know who else is up here on the stage. Peter Berry is the chair of the Board of Selectmen. Will you introduce those at the tables here on my right?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On my far right is Chin Sung Chang, selectman. Next to Chin Sung is selectman Katie Green, the board's clerk, Franny Osman, vice chair Janet Adachi. And behind me, if you can see them, I have, from my right, town manager Steve Ledoux, attorney Nina Pickering Cook from Town Council's office, and our stalwart town clerk Eva Skorazak.
Thank you, Peter. Margaret Bussey is the chair of the Finance Committee over at the table to my left on the other side of the screen. Would you introduce the members of the Finance Committee, please?
Yeah, I just have to look all the way down. All right. Jason Coles at the very end there. Shuyu Li is next to him. And then we have John Benson, who's an associate member. And then we have Roland Borden. And then Bob Evans. Steve Noon. Excuse me. Mike Majors. Dave Wellinghoff, who's the committee's clerk. And then Doug Tindell. Oh, no, I said Bob Evans. I said him. We're kind of crowded up here. And then Doug Tindell, who is our vice chair. And I just want to note that Doug, after 10 years of service on the Finance Committee, is going to be retiring after this meeting, so we're very grateful for all of his service. So thank you so much, Doug.
Doug, I too want to thank you for your service to the town. I certainly appreciate all your efforts as a member of the Finance Committee and a number of other committees in town as well. Thank you. And let me take that as an opportunity to put in a plug that I am looking diligently for not only a replacement for Doug as a regular member of the Finance Committee, but a couple of associate members as well. So if anybody is good with numbers or really gets into that sort of thing, please come talk to me. I would love to talk to you about serving on the Finance Committee. Thank you. I would finally note that we have various members of town staff here, mostly down here, off to my right, down here and sort of down in what I call the bullpen. I doubt they're getting paid over time to be here this evening, but they do a yeoman's work for the town. My understanding is that some of the presenters this evening may find it necessary to call on one or more of them to speak. As you know, many of them do not live in Acton. We typically require people who are not citizens of the Town of Acton to be voted in to be able to speak. To make that process go very quickly, I would ask right now that all of those who are in favor of having non-resident town staff members speak at town meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Let's get started.
Mr. Moderator, should we be turning these off?
Yes, please. Although I think the batteries, you know, will work the entire evening, but since we're trying to be economical, it would be good to keep them off. Thank you. Good point. We now move to Article 1, which is to choose town officers, and the very first item, I believe, is for the town clerk to handle.
It keeps your previous vote, and so if you just decided to abstain on the next vote without pressing the send button...
It does them all differently. It doesn't send it. Eva, you're going to... That's okay. Sorry for that. Slight technical issue.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The town moderator requests that town meeting elect a temporary moderator to assist the moderator and to preside over portions of articles at this town meeting. Under Town Bylaws Chapter A8, town meeting will now elect a temporary moderator. Are there any nominations for the temporary moderator from the Board of Selectmen or Finance Committee?
The board nominates Joanne Berry.
Ms. Adachi has nominated Joanne Berry to be the temporary moderator, term to expire in 2018. Are there any other nominations for temporary moderator from the floor of town meeting? Seeing no further nominations, we will now vote to elect the temporary moderator. Would those in favor of electing Joanne Berry to be the temporary moderator say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Vote is unanimous. Ms. Joanne Berry of Heronview Road is elected as temporary moderator, term to expire in 2018. Before proceeding further, I will swear in the temporary moderator. Ms. Berry, if you could come up.
You can raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear to faith in the performance of duties as temporary moderator for the Town of Acton?
I do. Thank you.
Congratulations. I can retire now. We will move on to the next motion under Article 1. Ms. Adachi moves that the town fix the compensation for elected officers, as shown in the article. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Adachi, do you have any comments to make on your motion?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Finance Committee have any comments?
We make no recommendation.
That's probably because you don't get paid, right? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Next motion is Mary Ann Ashton. Trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund nominates Andrea S. Miller of 30 Taylor Road, Acton, for the position of trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, term to expire 2020. Are there any other nominations for the Elizabeth White Fund? Seeing none, I declare the nominations are closed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of Andrea S. Miller of 30 Taylor Road for the position of trustee of Elizabeth White Fund, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. The next in order is Trudy Kosla. Trustee of the Charlotte Goodnow Fund nominates Harry A. Mink of 4 Cricket Way, Acton, for the position of trustee of the Charlotte Goodnow Fund, term to expire 2020. Are there any other nominations? I declare the nominations closed. All those in favor of Harry Mink for the position of trustee of the Charlotte Goodnow Fund, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Trudy Kosla, trustee of the Charlotte Goodnow Fund, nominates Bruce J. Muff of 6 Windermere Drive, Acton, for the position of trustee of the Charlotte Goodnow Fund, term to expire 2020. Are there any other nominations? I declare the nominations are closed. All those in favor of Bruce Muff of 6 Windermere Drive for the position of trustee of Charlotte Goodnow Fund, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. And finally, William Clower, trustee of the Acton Firefighters Relief Fund, nominates Bruce Stone of 2 First Street, Maynard, for the position of trustee of the Acton Firefighters Relief Fund, term to expire 2020. Are there any other nominations? I declare the nominations closed. All those in favor of Bruce Stone of 2 First Street, Maynard, for the position of trustee of the Acton Firefighters Relief Fund, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. I declare the motion carries unanimously. Okay. Move to Article 2, hear and accept town reports. The motion is, Mr. Chang moves that the town accept the reports of the various town officers and boards as set forth in the 2016 town report, and that the moderator call for any other reports. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. What we're going to do this evening, aside from the town report, which is mentioned in the motion, we're going to have two other reports that will be presented orally as part of this article. The first is a presentation by Ms. Bussey, Chair of the Finance Committee. This is the typical Finance Committee presentation on the state of the finances of the town. We will then have a following presentation by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. But I will now turn it over to Ms. Bussey. If you want to go down below, I think by agreement, you and I have agreed that you will have 12 minutes for your presentation. Please proceed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello, everyone. So I'm Margaret Bussey, the chair of the Acton Finance Committee. And let's see, I got to figure out my clicker here. So I'm just going to go through a few different things to kind of give you a little bit of an overview. The first will be, what is the Finance Committee? Then we'll talk about how is Acton doing just generally? Where did our budgets land? And what's kind of in the future? Some of our concerns, some of our recommendations. Some of our concerns, some of our recommendations. So first off, just quickly, we're an independent board, so we're independent of the Selectmen and of the School Committee, but we're appointed by the town moderator for three-year terms. And, Mr. Moderator, I just want to tell you that I did vote in favor of your increase in salary, so.
Very glad to hear that.
Just to make sure. Just kidding. So we're comprised of about nine members, of nine members plus associate members at the discretion of the moderator. And we advise the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee and you all as town meeting members on matters of financial import. We also really negotiate with these two bodies throughout the budgeting season. And so that's reflected in the Acton Leadership Group process, which I'll allude to a little bit later on. We really have the town's fiscal health and the taxpayer perspective. That's sort of what our chief priorities are. That's what we think of. That's what we always have in the back of our minds. All right, so how is Acton doing? So first off, very good news. We once again have achieved a AAA bond rating by Standard &amp; Poor's. This is actually wonderful, and we shouldn't take it for granted in the sense that there's only a few communities here in the Commonwealth that have this high of a rating. So this is great, and it's based upon the fact that we have strong management. We have a very strong economy overall in Acton, and we have good, strong budgetary flexibility and debt position. I listed a few other economic indicators just of interest for folks. We're definitely above the state average significantly in terms of our median family income and in terms of our housing prices. Also, unemployment rate is down below what the state average is. So we've really recovered from the Great Recession and are doing well. We also have a very high tax rate, which I think a lot of you are aware of. Now, what this chart shows is the tax rate compared to other communities that are sort of like ours or near us. But what I do want to say is that that does not necessarily mean that we're paying the most money for our taxes. A lot of these communities have higher property values, so even though the percentage of their tax rate is lower, they still might be paying a lot more. And this, I think in the interest of time, I'm going to just skip over it, but this is more just to say that our tax bills have been increasing at, you know, at a clipping rate. And during that time period, home values have only been increasing a little bit. Per capita income has only been increasing a little bit. So it's something that we keep in mind, again, from that sort of taxpayer's perspective. Okay, so here's sort of the meat of what we're doing here, which is that where did our budgets land this year? Where did we come out? So these are just some very broad overview, and I'll get into a little bit more detailed numbers. But for those of you that don't like to read the detailed numbers, these are some good benchmarks to think about. So overall, if you include both the town budget, so all the budgets for the municipal services and all the school budgets, if you put those all together, about three-quarters of our expenses come in the form of compensation. Now, this should not be surprising because we know we're a people, human capital-heavy enterprises. Both, we have lots of teachers, we have lots of town staff. So that's not a surprise. That just gives you a sense of where we land. The school budget is about two-thirds of the overall budget. So in other words, the school budget is about almost double of what our municipal spending is. Tax revenues comprise about a little more than four-fifths of what our overall revenues. So we have revenues from other sources, like local receipts, fees, that the town collects, some state aid, and some other sources. The annual increase over last year, sort of if you compare exactly how much money we're going to be spending or proposing to spend this year versus last year, it's about 3.7%. And the percent change in the average single-family tax bill is going to be 3.96%. That's what's being proposed. So this spells out a little bit more of the details of the numbers. So the total budget for this year, for fiscal year 18, is $92.5 million. And again, that's about a 3.7% change. The schools, which includes both our Acton-Boxborough Regional School District and also the Minuteman Regional Technical High School, which we send some kids to, so we pay money for that. We're a member of that. That change is going up about 4%. And then the municipality, so the town of Acton, that budget is $33.7 million and is going up about 3.2%. So the revenue sources, for those of you that are curious about this, is we have something that we call Proposition 2.5, which I think most of the people in the room are familiar with. But basically what that is, it's a state law that essentially limits towns from increasing the tax levy more than 2.5% in any given year unless there's an override vote, which you all would have to vote. So we're using all of that 2.5% increase. In addition to that, sometimes if we don't use the full 2.5% that we're allowed to, we can use some of that taxing capacity, if you will, in a different year. And so this year, we had almost $1 million of taxing, additional taxing capacity. It was the FinCom's position that we didn't want to use any of it. Where we finally landed is just using a very little amount, which is $75,000. Debt exclusion is $2.77 million. That's what we pay in addition to our regular tax levy that for items that have been bonded. Reserves, it's being proposed that we use $2.45 million in reserves of the town reserves. We're also proposing to use some of the school reserves. And then state aid comes in at about $1.57 million, and then local receipts, just under $6 million. And I'll talk a little bit more about reserves later. Okay, so what's in our future? What are we kind of thinking about as a committee? What are some of our concerns? What are our recommendations going forward? So one of our things that we think a lot about, and if you've followed these FinCom presentations over the last few years, we've been talking about this. And this is that is just compensation growth. So we talked about how three-quarters of our budget is spent on people, which we like. We like people, and we're grateful for all the services they offer us. But we have to keep an eye on the compensation growth because if we're having growth that's high, it's going to be hard to meet that growth in excess of 4%. It's difficult to sustain if you're in a situation where you can only tax 2.5% without an override. And I'll show a chart about this in just a moment. State aid is something that we count on, but we don't think that in this current environment we should be expecting a lot more as we anticipate future budgets. You'll hear more about this in the next presentation. But the capital, we have major capital needs, major needs for our facilities, both in the school and the town. So that's coming down the pike. I'll talk a little bit more about the reserves policy in a moment and about our structural deficit. This is just a quick chart, just to show sort of the average compensation growth over the last, from 2010 to 2015. So it's high, and it's something that we have to keep an eye on. So the FinCom actually spent a fair amount of time trying to craft a reasonable reserves policy because there has not been a reserves policy in place. Reserves are basically sort of excess funds that the town holds. And we get them from various sources. Sometimes we don't spend as much money as we thought. Sometimes we take in more money than we thought we were going to. Sometimes we have windfalls for various reasons. So they all get put into an account called reserves. We feel that of late, we've had, we have excess reserves. And so we think we should, as a town, decide what is our policy towards reserves? What are we going to do with excess reserves? And what does it mean to have excess reserves? So we've proposed an upper and a lower threshold, and I won't get into the mechanics of the actual, those actual thresholds now, but we've proposed those to basically say we want to have some minimum to make sure we're in good financial health, to make sure that we have funds for a rainy day. But that we also, once we have enough, then we should just think very carefully what should be done with those excess reserves, which is what we're kind of facing right now because we have about 10% of our total amount of spending, we have about 10% in reserves. And we think that's too high. And so we're saying what we've recommended is, once you hit that upper threshold, then the Board of Selectmen should either come up with a list of one-time capital expenses that these should be spent on and report on these at town meeting regularly, or they should be refunded to the taxpayer. So that's kind of our policy. We don't yet have an agreement with the Selectmen about this, but we're in talks with them. We think it's important just to have a policy, to create a framework for how to manage these so they don't just sort of float around and can sometimes cause an environment of sort of a lack of fiscal constraint because they're out there. Skip that. Our structural deficit is something that we keep an eye on as well. Typically, what we've been doing these last few years is sort of plugging a structural operating deficit through the use of reserves. And we want to sort of try to dial that down a little bit and work our way out of this structural deficit. As you can see, going forward in the years FY19 and FY20, the projections are looking like we have very large deficits. So that's something that we're keeping an eye on and encourage the Selectmen to take, you know, action and be thoughtful about that. So just quickly, on our conclusions and recommendations, again, we encourage the Selectmen and other elected leaders to take steps to address the structural deficit. Again, we encourage the Selectmen and the town fiscal managers to adopt a clear reserves policy. Funding for other post-employment benefits, which I have not talked about, but something has been talked about in the past, is very important and should continue at present levels, and we're doing very well on. And then the final two items concern the capital that I've referred to and you're going to hear about in the next presentation. But we have to take this seriously and recognize it needs to be taken care of and that we may very well have a capital override coming down the pike because of the large expenses we have. So finally, as I just conclude, I'll just say that we really, as a Finance Committee, strive to sort of enable Acton to continue to be able to thrive, sustain a thriving, balanced population. And this means that we really want our kids to have a top-rate education. I have five of my own kids. I don't want to compromise on that. But we also want all of our residents to receive services and amenities or access to amenities that encourage people to come here and stay here and be in Acton. And that also includes making sure that we are careful about our tax rate. So those are the things that we've been thinking a lot about as a Finance Committee, and I hope that you've learned something from this. Thank you so much, and I'll be up there.
Thank you. Thank you, Margaret. That was a very good presentation. And only about a minute over schedule, so not bad. I think next we will have a report from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and I think this is a tag team. I believe Selectwoman Adachi is going first, so I will recognize her to go ahead and introduce the other two who will also speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Janet Adachi. I'm Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. And joining me tonight, also, I am the Selectman Representative on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, which is fairly new to the town. Joining me tonight are Steve Noon, who is the Finance Committee Representative on the committee, and Christina Richlich, who is the School Committee Representative. I would add that Steve and I are co-chairing the committee at this point. This is a committee that the Selectmen actually authorized, I think, last spring or in the middle of the year. Developing a comprehensive, long-term capital plan is something that has, actually has made the, near the top of the list or the top of the list on the Selectmen's annual goals for the past several years. So this year, we're actually starting to take action on it. We did have a formal mission statement. It goes into some detail about the responsibilities, but in essence, the idea is to have a working document that will be updated regularly, not just every five or 10 years, but more regularly, often during the year because it will become part of, among other things, the regular annual budget planning process. And it will include some other information that you can learn about later. But membership represents the two main entities, the municipal government and the school side fairly equally, with counterparts from both sides on the committee. I would add that there are two members of the community on the committee, one designated by the School Committee and one designated by the Board of Selectmen. So the question is, okay, why now? Well, actually, it's actually a good idea generally to have a capital planning committee. It's a prudent thing to do. There are other communities in Massachusetts that have established capital planning and have pretty good capital plans, although I have to say that the quality varies from community to community. Some are very detailed, some are rather general. One of the better plans that I've seen is in the town of Arlington, which has had a capital plan in place for over 20 years. And it has really become a routine part of budget planning and also their annual town meeting. But in the near term, I've concerned Acton are some big capital projects in the wings. And I'm going to turn this over to Steve Noon to start talking about some of those things. Steve?
Thank you, Janet. What we're going to talk about for the next few minutes is a bit of history on the capital investment in the town and the schools, studies of the existing conditions of the facilities that have been conducted by both entities, some areas of concern, and some next steps. So this is a list of the major building projects and renovations that have happened recently. Now, the Public Safety Facility, we all know it as the police station. And if you think it was just finished a couple of years ago, you're not alone. I do too. The fact is, none of these things were done in the last dozen or so years. Now, this pie chart says we haven't been ignoring capital investment. We've made $16 million between the town and schools' worth of capital investments, but that big purple slice there, 29% of that $16 million is town land, not buildings. Another 23% in total goes to equipment for the town and schools, and another 22% goes to the vehicles. So there just wasn't much left to put into the buildings. Now, this bar chart shows the good side of not building buildings. Our current debt service, and this is the principal and interest that we pay on the obligations, and this includes the towns plus our share of the schools, it's going down. As you can see, it's about $6 million today. And in 2028, it'll be down to just over $1 million. So the first $5 or $6 million in new debt service on new spending, which you're going to hear about in a minute or two, won't be a huge net impact on your existing tax bill. So our town facilities are old. The West Acton Citizens Library, which is our smallest building, is 202 years old. It's the end of the war of 1812, you history buffs. Our two largest buildings, the Town Hall is 153 years old, and the old part of the Memorial Library is 118 years old. The new part of the Memorial Library is 20 years old and is already beginning to show its age. But of particular note is the age of our three fire stations. They are, on average, 57 years old. Now, in 2015, the town commissioned a study by an architectural firm, Lerner, Lads &amp; Bartles, to look at the condition of our facilities. In general, they found the buildings to be well-maintained, and some of the smaller buildings had some handicap accessibility issues. But most of our key buildings were in good shape and compliant to code. The catch was, they were compliant to code when they were built, which means they were compliant to the code of 50 or 60 years ago, or in the case of the Citizens Library, 200 years ago. The architects recommended a 20-year, $16 million capital repair or improvement plan. Now, this bar chart shows the timing of that 20-year program based on the criticality of the need of the building. It's important to note that if we decide to significantly repair buildings that do not meet the current building codes, then that building will have to be brought up to the current code, which to the current code, which will increase the cost and accelerate the timing. Posing a question in some cases, is should the building be repaired or should it be replaced? Now, we haven't just been dawdling along. We have included some of the near-term items in this year's budget. There's items for fire station HVAC systems and some items on the Memorial Library, including the new roof. But beyond the existing facilities study, there's a question of new facilities. Further complicating the decision on fire stations is the fact that the town's population has shifted since the 1950s. 40% of our fire runs or calls go to North Acton, but there is no station in North Acton. So the fire department is in the process of evaluating locations to develop a plan to ensure that all of our residents get an adequate response time. Also, expansion of the sewer system is something that's a priority. Now, in the case of a sewer system, the users of the system will pay the debt service, not the general taxpayers. However, the debt that we incur to build an expanded sewer system will be a general obligation of the town, so it'll be counted just like any other debt for any other purpose. Now, I'll turn this over to Christina Richlich to talk about schools.
Thank you, Steve and Janet. As you can see, about a quarter of the school district's 900,000 square feet of buildings averages more than 50 years old. And most notably, we have three elementary schools, each about 50 years old, that have not had any significant renovation or improvements in their lifetimes, Douglas Gates and Conan. Our administration building is in similar condition at 60 years old. In 2015, we began a focused effort to take stock of our capital assets and prioritize addressing this responsibility. We began by hiring Doran Whittier Architects to complete the first phase of a two-phase study, our existing condition study. They found, similar to the town, that our buildings overall are solidly constructed and well-maintained, and those without renovations or additions are in the most need of improvements. Many building codes and regulations have changed significantly since our older buildings were constructed, and many of our infrastructure systems and components are beyond their expected lives. This study also documented many issues at Douglas Gates and Conan, including serious overcrowding, systems issues, and lack of accessibility and space, as well as code compliance and health and safety issues across our buildings. The $120 million of needed capital improvements that were identified represents the total cost in today's dollars of fixing the facilities and does not reflect addressing the functional use of the space, the overcrowding, or the appropriateness of the space for educational programming. It's also not the cost of an integrated plan to accomplish all we need to do. This integrated plan is what we're developing as we finalize our district master plan. Doran Whittier recommended to us to implement a capital improvement plan, to submit statements of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to build a new elementary school or schools, to further analyze our district. They recommended further analyzing our district's educational and space needs and finalizing a district master plan. Our next step was to complete the second phase of this study, our master plan and feasibility study. In that study, Doran Whittier worked with the district to assess the educational and instructional needs, as well as capacity and utilization of all of our facilities now and in the future. As a part of this study, there was an extensive educational visioning process with over 80 participants from our towns and school communities, and a dedicated working group to guide the work throughout that study. The result was the development of numerous possible options for our district that address multiple issues at once. We are trying to address many problems at many locations concurrently, so our master plan options do not include anything as simple as build a new Douglas school, but rather may, for example, include a twin school encompassing Douglas as well as another school. We're moving ahead to finalize and implement our district master plan. We are now gathering feedback from the community on preferred building and renovation project options, which will go before the school committee for a vote in June. You may have seen our table on your way in tonight, and you may have seen this flyer, which is promoting community forums. We've held a number of forums so far to date, and we have a number of others arranged. Next Monday, April 10th, from 1:00 to 2:30 at the library, and next Wednesday, April 12th, from 7:00 to 8:30 at the junior high. You may also view our presentation on our school website and Acton TV and provide us with electronic feedback remotely. If you don't have enough of me tonight, you can see me for half an hour on Acton TV. At the same time, we are moving ahead with a partnership with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. I'm thrilled to report to you that the Douglas School was one of only 17 projects approved by MSBA out of a total of 89 applications. I'd like to be clear that while we were accepted for funding for the Douglas School, as long as our building project addresses Douglas, the entire project will be eligible for MSBA reimbursement. So in summary, how are we, as a school district, working to address these capital needs? Well, we're working in three parallel tracks. In the short term, the next one to two years, we are working to increase the amount of capital needs that our operating budget can address and plan to increase that each year for the foreseeable future. In the medium term, three to five years, we're working to implement the capital improvement plan over time and have done some work to organize priority projects into scope packages to do that work most efficiently. Lastly, over the long term, the next five or more years, we're working to address our needs in the form of a building project utilizing state support through the Mass School Building Authority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's obvious that the Capital Improvement Planning Committee has been doing a lot of work. Selectwoman Adachi, you want to go? You want the last word?
Yes, I have. And now that everybody's spirits have been lifted by the presentation by Steve and Christina about what lies ahead, I have the easy job. I think that presentations should always be like this, where all of the heavy lifting gets delegated to other people. But anyhow, while you're feeling cheered up, it starts soon. The town will have an opportunity to vote on the building project in December, specifically on December 4th. There will be a special town meeting in Boxwell and in Acton to vote on the same issue, which is proposed design fees and project manager, the costs of that. As Steve mentioned earlier, the town's proposed budget for fiscal 18 does address a couple of the capital projects involving the library and the town center fire station that were high priorities in the 2015 study. And in the meantime, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee will continue to work. We've been meeting the past year, but we've barely scratched the surface. But the hope is, ultimately, to have a good sense of the infrastructure inventory and sort of high-cost equipment, talking about $100,000 or more, to also cover the already approved projects and to kind of address the status of the financing for those projects, the declining debt obligation, to add new proposed projects and address financing, proposed financing for those, and ultimately, finally, most importantly perhaps for all of you, to sort of analyze the financial impact on the town as well as the taxpayers. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. There is a motion pending to accept all reports, including these two verbal reports. Do the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends this article.
And the Finance Committee?
The Board of Selectmen recommends this article. I mean, the Finance Committee.
You're trying to tell us something there?
Not at all.
I will open it up to town meeting members who may have questions or comments. I see no one running to the microphone, so I will call for the vote on the motion to accept these reports. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now move to Article III, Budget Transfer. The motion is, Mr. Berry moves that the town take no action. Mr. Berry, do you have comments to make on why we're not taking any action?
There are no transfers to deal with, and the Selectmen recommend this article.
I did not get a second, by the way, so I do need a second. Sorry. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee also take no action for the same reasons expressed.
Any comments from town meeting members? Seeing no one standing, call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to take no action, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. We will now move to Article IV, The Town Operating Budget. This is a little bit longer motion. Mr. Berry moves that the town appropriate $33,151,899 to be expended by the town manager for the purpose of funding the fiscal year 2018 municipal budget, and to meet this appropriation, $32,503,249 be raised from general revenues, $648,650 be transferred from free cash, and that the town authorize the town manager to lease on such terms and conditions as he may determine. Vehicles and equipment for a period not to exceed five years, and to sell, trade, or otherwise dispose of vehicles and equipment being replaced, and to expend any proceeds so received. Do I have a second? The motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Berry, you may speak to your motion, and by agreement, you have 12 minutes, since this is a rather large expenditure.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening. Let me just start by reviewing some of the highlights of this year's budget that the town was able to accomplish. First, the town continued its contribution to other post-employee benefits, and I'll speak a little bit more about that later. Margaret mentioned that. Those are health insurance payments for retired employees that the town has been accumulating a liability for, and the bill will become due in the future. So we're now putting money aside to meet that obligation. We have continued our senior tax relief to try to encourage seniors to remain in town. We have abatement programs that we put $200,000 in the budget to provide abatements to seniors for real estate relief, tax relief, implementation of the Board of Selectmen's goals, a purchase of 53 River Street, a prime piece of property along Fortbrook Pond in South Acton, and a new senior center lease on Sudbury Road over off of Route 62. Those last two items came up in the fall of 2016, so those are items that weren't originally in the budget, and we used transfers from our reserves of free cash to purchase 53 River Street and enter into the new senior center lease. Let's see, how do I move this along? Okay, Acton has obtained a AAA bond rating from Moody's, and they've noted the strengths of the town's finances. First of all, good financial management. The town has healthy reserves. We have a low debt burden, which is decreasing over time currently around town that has great market values of our property, and the town has a very low unemployment rate. We're one of only 14 municipalities that got a AAA bond rating from Moody's, and given that we will have a number of capital items that will be considered over the next few years, that can be very important in saving the town money and interest payments. Whoops. Here we go. Okay, the budget is determined by the Acton Leadership Group process. The members are the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen, the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Committee, Chair and Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, and the Town Financial Staff and Town Manager. This group has been together for a number of years. It's a very important process. We work by consensus, and the goals of the Acton Leadership Group are to project revenue, come up with a proposed spending plan, consider the use of our reserves, and put together a three-year plan that contains projections going forward. So the group works by consensus. It's a process that requires a lot of compromise, a lot of discussion, and we've been able to reach consensus over a number of years. We meet from the fall through the spring to come up with the town and school budgets. Going the wrong way here. Okay, here's a five-year budget average of the municipal budgets. The average increase over five years has been 2.57%. The town has not increased its budget to the maximum that it would be allowed to do under Prop 2.5 in fiscal year 15. There was a 1.96% increase in the town's budget, 1.62 in '16, 2.20 in '17. That leads to a untaxed levy that the town carries over year, every year. Essentially, it's a tax relief to the citizens. We don't tax to the max. When we don't do that, we're able to carry over the difference between what we actually taxed to and what Prop 2.5 would allow us to tax to for future years, which could be access to increase the actual revenues from taxes above the 2.5% maximum. So what has happened is we accumulated $985,000 of this untaxed levy capacity by undertaxing over the last few years. And what the ALG decided to do this year to meet the difference between revenues and proposed expenditures was to use $75,000 of that untaxed levy capacity, leaving $910,000 available for future purposes, and to use $2.48 million of our free cash reserves to meet that gap between revenues and spending, leaving a reserves of $4.4 million. So this is the total budget. The operating budget is going up 2.8%. Subsidies to the enterprise funds that the town runs for the ambulance program and transportation services the town provides to its residents are increasing from 247 to 431. Those will be dealt with in later articles. This article just deals with the town's operating budget and capital needs that will also be dealt with in later articles, $126,750. So the total spending for the town's operation would be $33,709,649, a 3.22% increase over fiscal '17, current year's budget. OPEB contributions of $600,000 in '17 and '620 and '18 are included in the operating budget totals. This kind of shows you, this pie chart shows you the budget by object. As with most operations, any of you who run a business, you know that, again, salaries and fringes are the biggest costs in most businesses. Over 72%. Debt service is 8%. That's the third biggest expense. And here is the municipal budget by function. Police and fire are our biggest departments, take up 25% of the budget. The finance and accounting department, the reason for the large percentage of that budget is because all the compensation for all town employees for accounting purposes are in that budget. Insurance, bonding costs, a lot of those kind of costs are in the finance department's budget. Other is all the other town departments that aren't listed here, natural resources, council on aging, and all those other departments. Here's the major revenue. Obviously, property taxes is 89.5%. Reserves, 3%. As a second excise tax is 4% of the budget. That's the second highest, and reserves is 3%. State aid, only 1.5% and declining. So these are the features of the So these are the features of the fiscal year '18 municipal budget. We're continuing to put several hundred thousand dollars toward the senior tax relief program. We added a new skilled laborer. This is carpentry work and other kinds of work that we would have contracted out in the past, so the selectmen determined that it would be a cost saver to hire an employee to perform those duties rather than continue to pay outside contractors for that. In-house advanced life support services, that's the increase in the fire department's ability to provide emergency care to ambulance calls, which will eventually bring more revenue into the town, but has startup costs that require additional subsidies to the ambulance enterprise fund, fully funding OPEB over 20 years, and the budget falls below the FinCom's 3.3% spending target. We are purchasing 516, proposing to purchase 516 Mass Avenue for West Acton parking, a bike lane rail trail study. We have two bike paths in town, as you're aware. Assabette River Rail Trail coming into South Acton Train Station, Bruce Freeman Rail Trail in North Acton. We're trying to find ways of connecting those two up, and you've seen a new bike lane on Route 27 from South Acton Train Station into Kelly's Corner. That's a result of a grant that we received under our Complete Streets policy. I believe they're building a bike lane on the other side of Route 27. So we're trying to provide access from South Acton Assabette River Rail Trail to the Bruce Freeman Trail in North Acton. We have an intersection study at Prospect and Main Street. You take your life in your hands trying to navigate that intersection. The police think it's the most dangerous intersection in town, so we want to study that and propose improvements to make it more safe. We're going to replace Fire Engine 23 under a normal replacement. It's reached the end of its useful life. This is the OPEB liability, again, future costs for employee healthcare costs, and we'll continue, if we continue to contribute $600,000, $620,000 a year over the next 20 years, we drive that liability down from $21 million to just under $3 million in 2036. This is the chart of our free cash and stabilization. We have $2 million in a stabilization fund that can be used for emergencies. It can be accessed, requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting to take money out of there. The selectmen have generally indicated that, although we can't bind future selectmen or future town meetings, that that $2 million we put aside should be used for capital items in the future. So that leaves about $2.3 million in free cash, which town meeting must also appropriate. It just requires a majority vote to appropriate that. And what this shows is that coming out of a recession, the town's reserves have increased. That's due to a lot of things. For instance, the state only allows the town to budget for excise taxes on automobiles and personal property that they've historically received. A lot of people start buying new cars. There's more revenue that comes in, and that goes into free cash. But as you can see, as we go forward, we've been using about $2.5 million a year for the last three years to supplement the budget, and so the free cash is declining and will continue to decline in the future. So again, to sum, the operating budget, $33,151,899. Capital requests, $126,750. The enterprise funds, 431, for a total municipal spending of $33,709,649. And the selectmen recommend that the town meeting vote to approve this budget, operating budget of $33,151,899. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Appreciate that. And I believe you said on behalf of the selectmen, you recommend your budget, correct?
I did, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Turn to the Finance Committee. Do you have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends this motion.
Thank you. I will now open it up to debate, and I recognize the speaker at microphone number three.
Mr. Moderator, I have an amendment motion, which you have on the slides, and I have it as well.
I think, I think we all know who you are, Mr. Cadillac, but you might want to introduce yourself, please.
I was hoping some people didn't. I'm Charlie Cadlec, Paul of your road.
Okay. I think we do have the amendment. I know, that's not it, no. But I think we do have it.
That's my, do we, do you read the motion normally, or you want me to?
If you, if you would like to make the amendment, you can go right ahead.
I move to amend the motion under Article Four by deleting the $32,503,249 to be raised from general revenues and the $648,650 be transferred from free cash, and adding towards $31,503,249 to be raised from general revenues and $1,648,650 to be transferred from free cash.
Do I have a second? Amendment has been made and seconded. Mr. Cadillac, by agreement, you have three minutes to speak to your amendment, and you may come to the podium, because I know you have a couple of slides to show.
Which is the magic button to move the slide?
I think it's the one on the, on the right.
Left.
Right.
Try the right.
Okay. Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody. This is very simple. Basically, my motion-
Mr. Cadillac, can you speak to the other microphone? I think the other one is the one that's working.
There you go. You're right. Put a light on it.
Thank you.
Good evening again. This is a very simple amendment. It does not change the total appropriation. This is not a motion to cut the budget or discuss the budget at all. It simply changes the way this appropriation is funded by increasing the amount taken from free cash, which is reserves, and decreasing the amount taken from general revenue, which is taxation, which determines your tax bill. I don't read my own slides. I know all of you can read. Nobody's objecting. So the numbers are pretty obvious. Changes a million. I'll go through this very quickly, since I only have three minutes. The tax bill, as was mentioned before during the Finance Committee presentation, is, I'll have to back up. The average single-family home is a designation used by the Department of Revenue. Year-to-year comparison is a little easier. That's calculated by the Department of Revenue. The projected tax bill for next year is what you see, the numbers. The 3.96% is also what was mentioned by Finance Committee. This amendment would change the numbers to what you see on the screen. The reserves, this is taken from the ALG spreadsheet. I didn't make them up. These are the numbers at the end of this fiscal year, projected with some replenishment, which always happens. The current reserves would make the percentage of next year's budget, which is the way to calculate it, as shown on the screen. If we use another million, you see the numbers, still 6.4%, well above what is generally considered to be needed maximum, 5%. As a matter of fact, on the regional school districts, not just Acton's, but statewide, is limited to a 5% reserve, which is their own reserve called the excess and deficiency In this warrant, the Finance Committee has written about their lower threshold and upper threshold reserve numbers. They're on the screen. After this amendment, we would still be well above that. The selectmen are considering a policy that Margaret mentioned, the upper limit of 8%. It's also, the lower limit is 3%. They do not count the school reserves. It's a, we could have a two-hour discussion on how to calculate reserves. Obviously, we won't do that, but here's the result. The amendment would still be above it. Now, the difference is 1.24% in the tax bill. Does it make a difference? Well, as you can see by the numbers, the tax bill over the last 29 years has increased by an average of just under 5%. Why is it more than 2.5? Override. Here's the graph. That's the tax bill over the last 29 years. If that average had been 1.24% lower, this would be your tax bill. Sorry, back up. So yes, it makes a difference. Now, I am over my limit, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cadillac. I will remind town meeting members, we are going to be discussing just the amendment that has been proposed, and I will turn to the Board of Selectmen for their recommendation on the amendment, just the amendment. Mr. Berry?
The Board of Selectmen, Mr. Moderator, voted to recommend that town meeting not accept this amendment.
Okay. Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. By a split vote, five to three, the FinCom did not recommend this motion. The FinCom is generally sympathetic to the notion that our reserves are too high. Some members felt that we should use this additional million dollars to lower taxes, as Charlie has proposed. However, others felt that, given the capital needs we have coming down the pike, we should instead be putting excess reserves to capital. And other members, while generally supportive of using reserves to lower taxes, felt that we should uphold what the FinCom negotiated during the Acton Leadership Group process that we negotiate with the schools and the Board of Selectmen. And that process consists in part of how much we should use in reserves to fund the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open it up to town meeting members. I will remind you that-
Excuse me, I had a couple of slides that would support the selectmen's position on this article. I don't know if you want me to review those before you-
Oh, I thought you were going to give those when you gave your recommendation.
Okay. I guess we miscommunicated on that.
If you, you have two slides?
I think I might have four.
If you can do-
I can do them in less than three minutes.
If you can do four in less than two minutes, go right ahead.
These are the reasons why the selectmen oppose this motion. It first invalidates the ALG consensus. Selectmen don't feel that this is friskily, fiscally prudent. The ALG plan provides $910,000 in tax relief for fiscal '18, that's the untaxed levy, $4.8 million cumulative over the prior 10 years. So we have been giving money back to the taxpayers by undertaxing and by using reserves to supplement the budget. This compounds a whiplash effect in the immediate following year. The current ALG plan shows a dollar change of $424 in fiscal '18, estimated $481 in fiscal '19. This is the projected fiscal '19 budget, would go to 5.58% using the additional million dollars in the untaxed levy that would be added by accepting Mr. Cadillac's motion. So we feel it unnecessarily uses reserves. Capital needs are imminent in the future. We need to maintain our bond rating. We might be able to soften the capital numbers by using our reserves, and our reserve levels are at risk. This shows again where our reserve levels are. In 2018, we're estimating a little bit over $4 million. If this amendment is accepted, that'll be down to a little over $3 million, and we feel that is inadequate, given our needs going forward. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Now, I will open it up to town meeting members for comments on the amendment, and I will recognize the speaker at microphone number four.
Hi, Amy Krishnamurthy, 136 Davis Road, and Vice Chair for the Acton School Committee. The School Committee reviewed and discussed this amendment at a meeting earlier this evening. The use of reserves has received significant public discussion and debate throughout the budget process. The School Committee agrees that the Acton Leadership Group plan is a reasonable way to gradually reduce reserves over time. As you heard earlier this evening, there are significant capital needs that will be coming before town meeting this fall and over the next few years. At a fall town meeting this year, we will be requesting between $1 million and $1.5 million for design funds for a school building project, as well as some funding for bonding of capital maintenance projects. There are already $2.5 million of free cash and $450,000 from school district reserves being used in the budget presented tonight. Another million dollars would use $4 million in reserves at one time. If we use another million dollars now for operating budgets, we will jeopardize critical capital projects coming in the future. The School Committee urges a no vote on this amendment.
Thank you. I will recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Snyder Grant, 18 Half Moon Hill. I came to this mic as a, for a question. I think it's okay to go to either mic for questions, if that's right?
Absolutely. What is your question?
Okay, great, thank you. So, Mr. Moderator, at the beginning of town meeting tonight, you introduced a new, a new concept for town meeting that I thought was tremendously exciting, which was that you were going to not accept applause or boos for people's comments. That this is, this is new for our town meeting, it's a practice at other town meetings, it helps keep the focus on the content rather than the, the sort of the mob, and I was wondering if this would, if this would be a time to reinforce that, given that there was applause at the end of the amendment presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I would implore town meeting members, I do think, as a matter of civility, that it is best that we, we keep our feelings to our votes, to our clickers, if you will, and engaging in either applause or booing, I think frankly is, is not civil conduct. I know in the past, town meeting has, here in Acton, has done that. I have visited a number of other towns that don't do that, and, and I frankly agree with that position, but thank you, Mr. Snyder Grant, for pointing that out, and hopefully I will be a little more diligent, but thank you. Recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
Ben Hur, Ben Hurwitz, Minut Avenue. My voice sounds really strange. So I, I certainly agree with the other con arguments made against the amendment. I also feel that a significant change like this, you know, something that's, doesn't appear in the warrant, most people didn't know this was going to be proposed. Obviously, some, some people did, and may have come here specifically to support this. I don't know, but it feels to me kind of unfair to bring this kind of change to, to the budget, to the town meeting, without- to the town meeting without more of an advance warning to the townspeople. You know, as, as you noted earlier, it's not that well-tended here tonight, and I think that's because most people, if they looked at the warrant, they looked it over and they thought, okay, I know what's gonna be voted on. That's it.
Thank you. I, I would note that some information regarding the amendment was on the town website as of Friday, but, you know, that's, that is, you know, the way town meeting works, is people can come and make amendments on the spot, we do try to get them ahead of time in writing. I recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Alan Nitschel, Marion Road. Couple of comments. First, I should note with the last speaker's comment, that I don't myself attend the ALG meetings regularly, I've been to a few this year, but Charlie goes to all the ALG meetings, and he has made this proposal to them. So, my major comment tonight is, note that all three boards are against this because they want to raise your taxes, they want to raise them higher, and as you heard earlier, there is a, quite a few plans for capital improvements coming down the pike, and having a high tax rate will obviously be easier for them to spend money. I'm very concerned about the schools' capital improvement plans, I've been looking at this issue, and I believe the school is planning to ask the voters to approve an override to pay for the school buildings. And the reason we need to support this amendment now is because we need to send a signal to our leaders of all three boards that our tax rate is important to the taxpayers. Now, if we fail to send the signal, we could be setting ourselves up for a very divisive override, which has to be passed by both towns at the ballot box, and that is gonna be a difficult thing to do if there's an organized opposition. And I can tell you, I will be very motivated to organize an opposition to an override for the school buildings, because I've studied this and I don't think it's needed. So let's send a signal tonight to our leadership that taxpayers are concerned about the tax rate in Acton, we are gonna be looking at the plans for the capital spending very carefully, and this is important to us, so I urge you to vote yes on the amendment. Thank you.
I recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Wayne Fredericks, Windsor Ave. I'd like to bring up two points. One is Mr. Berry used the word, the phrase, "we are undertaxing." What he really means is they're not taxing to the max, and I look at taxing to the max is, has a whole different connotation than "we are undertaxing." So I want to make sure that everybody's aware that they're really not undertaxing, they're just proposing not to tax to the max. The other thing is that we're all aware of compounding interest. Mr. Cadillac brought up the fact that from 1988 to now, that the taxes have gone up 5 point some percent per year as an average because of overrides, but it's not just overrides, it's because if we go with a 4% tax this year increase, then next year we get 2.5 on top of the 4. So this is compounding, and this adds to the fact that after 30 years, you find out that we've been paying 5 or 6% more per year on tax. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else standing at this point, so I will call for the vote. I will remind everyone that we are voting on the amendment. We now have the full amendment up here on the screen, so I will ask all those in favor of the amendment, as shown on the screen, please say aye. All those opposed to the amendment, please say nay. The amendment fails. Point of order, what is your point of order, sir? The point of these is, when I cannot discern the voice vote, that we will go to these. Is that, is that a motion, Mr. Nitschel? Okay, we will, we will, we will try these electronic devices, that's fair enough. So, I will ask everyone to turn on their clickers by pressing the orange button, as we did in the practice session earlier. Has everyone turned their clickers on? Okay. Is everyone ready to vote? We will put 30 seconds on the screen. Remember, you are voting yes if you're in favor of the amendment by pressing button A, if you're opposed to the amendment, vote nay by pressing E. The voting window is now open. The voting window has closed, I'm conferring with council over a legal issue here. Okay. Sorry about that, we were just conferring about whether the, the motion to, to revote was technically correct, and I have deemed that it was. We should have tallied votes, we also had to get the votes from the people out in the cafeteria, which are being delivered, or have been delivered. There's no one up in the, in the... Right, that's correct. Okay. We will see the results. We see that 41% voted for the amendment, 59% voted against, and so therefore the amendment has failed. We will now return to the main motion. And I will open it up to town meeting members who wish to discuss the main motion. I see no one standing, so we will go ahead and vote on the main motion that is shown on the screen. All those in favor of the motion as read under Article IV, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion is carried. We will now move to Article V. The Acton-Boxborough Regional School District Assessment. Ms. Krishna Murthy moves that the town appropriate $57,730,056 to be expended by the Superintendent of Schools to fund the fiscal year 2018 assessment of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District, and to meet this appropriation, $57,081,406 be raised from general revenues and $648,650 be transferred from free cash. Do I have a second? The motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Krishna Murthy, by agreement, I think we agreed you would have up to 12 minutes to speak to your motion, you may begin.
Good evening, my name is Amy Krishna Murthy. My husband Venkitt and I have lived in Acton for 13 years and have four boys at the junior high and the high school. I'm the Acton Vice Chair for the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee, and I will be addressing Article V, the ABRSD Assessment. I'd like to introduce my fellow School Committee members, if y'all could just raise your hand. Mary Brolin is our current chair, Diane Baum, Bridget Bieber is not here tonight, ooh, sorry, Maya Minkin, Kathleen Neville, who's the Vice Chair for Boxborough, Maria Neeland, and Maria is retiring this year after nine years on the Regional Committee, and two years before that on the Boxborough School Committee, and we will miss her, Deanna Sullivan, Christina Rischlich, and Eileen Zhang. Before I get started, we have a brief statement from Christina on the Regional Finance Oversight Committee.
Thank you, Amy. The Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee created a subcommittee in the fall of 2013 to review the projected financial benefits of regionalization proposed by the Regional School District Study Committee and presented to both town meetings in the spring of 2013. The expectation is that the subcommittee will be in existence for five years. It consists of representatives from the Acton and Boxborough Boards of Selectmen and Finance Committees and two School Committee Representatives. After reviewing in detail the average per pupil cost for each elementary school for fiscal year 16 and the projected financial benefits, we concluded unanimously that, one, per pupil costs for Blanchard Elementary School in fiscal year 16 continued to decrease relative to before regionalization, and, two, the projected regionalization savings, cost cutting, and increased regional transportation aid are accurate and consistent with estimates that were presented at both Acton and Boxborough Town Meetings in the spring of 2013. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, I'm gonna start off, we're very proud of our students and our accomplishments, and I'm just gonna highlight a few. The Integrated Preschool has been focusing on socialization skills through games, stories, thematic units, and adult modeling. Merriam's school-wide theme this year was gratitude. McCarthy Town has started an amazing breakfast program open to all students. Gates celebrated its arts night with over 2,000 pieces of students' work on display. Douglas recently held one of its two exhibition nights where students design, plan, and carry out extensive investigations. Conant just completed its work with Tufts and WGBH on the Arthur Ames Buddy Project. Blanchard partnered with Game Right Games and had held a family game night. RJ Gray's annual musical was Once Upon a Mattress. And, on January 11th, the high school held its 17th Annual Community Service Awards, where 765 students were recognized for volunteering a total of 77,000 hours during 2016. With our budget, we support the missions, values, and goals of the school district. These include meeting our students' social, emotional, educational, and safety needs. The region's FY18 budget comes to $86,949. This is about $3 million more than last year and represents a 3.63% increase. 2.8% of the increase is for the operating budget, another 0.6% for capital, and 0.23% for Minuteman Tech, a program at the junior high that was traditionally paid directly by the town and is now shifting to the region's budget. Overall, Acton's assessment will increase 3.9%. This slide shows the growth in our budget from 2015 to 2018, and as you can see, the rate of growth has been lower over the past two years. In terms of budgeted revenues, Chapter 70 has had only, has had only minimal growth, and the regional bonus aids that we receive for regionalizing the elementary schools is scheduled to decline each year. We are in the fourth of five years for that bonus. We are expecting some growth in regional transportation reimbursement from the state and have budgeted a small amount of Medicaid reimbursement for the first year based on the trend payments over the last few years. I'd like you to note, we have budgeted a sizable increase to the use of our E&amp;D funds. This is specifically for the replacement of the turf at Leary Field, since it's such a large capital item. On the expense side, our largest budget drivers are salaries and benefits, which account for about 2.53% of the budget increase, and increases to capital, which account for 0.62% of the budget increases. This shows the allocation of the Acton Regional School District budget. You can see clearly, we are a people-based organization. Salaries account for 63% of the budget, followed by benefits for about 16%. Special education tuition and transportation account for about 8.5%, and insurance, utilities, and maintenance of buildings account for about another 4%. As you heard earlier, we've been assessing our facilities over the last two years. In FY18, in the FY18 budget, we are allocating $270,000 to capital needs within the departments, and an additional $770,725, first to replace the turf on Leary Field, to replace boilers and pumps at Blanchard, to address heaving at Conant, and to replace a vehicle used by the Facilities Department. Given our significant capital needs, we felt it necessary to increase our capital budget to immediately address some of the most, some of our most urgent projects. As a regional school district, we are allowed to retain reserve funds up to 5% of our overall budget. These excess and deficiency funds, or E&amp;D funds, are also a factor in determining our bond rating. When we fully regionalized in 2015, our E&amp;D was at its lowest point, while our budget grew significantly because of the addition of the elementary schools. You can see that we have now retained $2.7 million in E&amp;D, or 3.3%. In an effort to plan for future responsibilities related to other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, we began putting funds into an OPEB account in 2013. We have budgeted funds towards OPEB each year since, allocating $900,000 in FY18. With this contribution, we will have funded $3.5 million towards an estimated $40 million liability. Now, to provide some context for the budget, although we've been talking about declining enrollment in the region for many years now, we're finding that we are declining much more slowly than what was originally estimated. We do expect to continue to decline through 2025, serving an estimated 4,942 students, but this is about 500 students more than what was originally estimated. At the same time that we have experienced declines in student enrollment, we have seen an increase in the proportion of students who are economically disadvantaged, growing from 2.5% of the population in FY11 to 8.8% this year. The greatest increases are in the elementary schools' population, and these students often need additional supports. Concurrently, concurrently, we have also experienced significant growth in the number of English language learners in our district. These, we, in 2010, we had 85 ELL students, and now, as of 2017, that number is 238. These students need specialized services in smaller classroom settings. Along with our multi-year efforts to support students' mental health and wellness, we've added staff to address the changing needs of our student population. We have budgeted for a net increase of 4.0 FTEs, or Full-Time Equivalents, totaling $357,500. As you can see, we have, we have, as you can see, we have growing needs, but we have worked hard to bring you a fiscally responsible budget that aims to support all of our students. We respectfully request that you support Article V. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation on the motion behind Article V?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously voted to support Article V, the Regional School Assessment. Despite slowly declining enrollment, the district has had to grapple with increased -- Despite slowly declining enrollment, the district has had to grapple with increasing special education costs and a changing student demographic with more needs and fewer resources. This year's budget addresses those challenges while also recognizing the budget constraints of the region's two communities, and therefore, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends this article.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Yes, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open it up to town meeting members for questions and comments. Recognize the speaker at microphone number three.
I'm still Charlie Kadlec. Amy, could you show one of the early slides that, on the bottom, had the percentage increases for Acton? It's like, now, in the beginning, like, third, fourth slide, I wasn't counting. Keep going. That one. Could you explain why the difference between the 3.9% increase in the Acton Assessment and the 0.8% increase in the Boxborough Assessment?
You may answer.
Okay, okay, I'm going to try. If one of you wants to step in. We have more students in Acton than Boxborough. We cover about 80% as Acton, because we have about 80% of our population in the schools, whereas Boxborough has about 20% of our school population. About 20% of our school population is from Boxborough. Yeah, we also took our share of the savings earlier, which is going into this. I'm sorry. Marie, you want to talk? Because, please. Thank you, Charlie, for that question. Let Marie jump in.
Well...
If that's okay.
It would be nice if you asked me first.
I'm sorry. It's Mr. Moderator. May I please ask?
You know, I need to earn those $20, so... I'll recognize Marie Alteri at microphone number four to add to that explanation.
Thank you. I'm Marie Alteri, deputy superintendent of the school district. There are two things at play here. One is the difference in enrollment between the two towns, and that's part of the assessment. But when we first fully regionalized pre-K to 12, there was some savings, and a large percentage of that savings went to the town of Acton, and there was a five-year plan for that to gradually move back to strictly moving to the enrollment-based assessment model. And this is really the first year where it starts to move back from Acton getting the vast majority, 80% of the savings, back towards Boxborough. So that's why it's a little bit different this year, but that money was saved over the last three years as we've regionalized.
If I may, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kadlec, you have another question or a comment?
Well, the enrollment proportions have not changed, 80/20, give or take, from last several years, so it does not begin to explain the difference in the assessments.
I just... May I respond?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify. Acton is about 85%, and Boxborough enrollment is about 15%, so I just wanted to be really clear about those numbers.
We won't solve that here tonight. Thank you.
I recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Tara Fredericks from West Acton. With all my degrees, I still can't figure out how the enrollment goes down and the budget keeps going up, but I'll leave that to Charlie to figure out. My real question is, on the Leary Field replacement, I've heard a lot about chemicals leaching from artificial turf, and I'd like to understand whether anybody's looked into that and what the results have been, because I think people are concerned about what kids are breathing. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask that JD Head take this question.
Sure.
He's our facility, head of our facilities. He can answer this better than I can.
I believe you're a resident of Acton, correct? Yes, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. Tara, we actually have done an analysis of the black rubber infill on both the Lower Fields and Leary Field. I'd be happy to email that to you or post it on our website. The contents of the makeup of that material, you know, fits with, there are no EPA standards for it, but it fits within the most stringent EPA soil sample analysis for drinking water in residential areas. But there are no state or federal guidelines around that, but I'd be happy to share that with you if that's helpful, and post it on our website for the community.
Thank you. Recognize the speaker at microphone number four.
John Peterson, 6 Jackson Drive. I have a question about the difference between the schools' policy for retiring the OPEB debt and the towns' policy. Looking quickly at the numbers, the school budget is about twice the town budget, and therefore, the OPEB contribution for the schools should be about twice the contribution for the town if the policies were the same with respect to the debt retirement. What is the difference between the policies?
We don't have a formal policy. I mean, I can try to get some more information for you, but I can check around the room, but we don't really have a formal policy that I can explain to you right now.
Thank you.
I see no one else standing, so I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion carries. Thank you. It's nine o'clock. Does that mean the basketball game's about to begin?
It means it's snack time.
It is snack time. Okay. Well, this is appropriate timing. Ms. Osman, you want to enlighten the town meeting members what we're talking about?
Yes. Pam Nurse, who is the representative to the Minuteman Tech, and I, proposed to the moderator that we give out some cookies in the middle of town meeting. I've always wished that I could go out in the lobby and get a cookie or something around this time of night, and we got permission from the schools as long as there were not any nut products in it. And that was harder than I thought. But we got a bunch of cookies and chocolates, and we're going to just sort of give them out, and all I ask for you is that you pass them around, and that, at the end of the evening, whatever ones you see, can you please bring them down and put them on this table, because I'll bring them to tomorrow night for our snack time.
Pam?
Mr. Moderator may speak to cookies.
And you'll be able to speak to your motion in a minute as well.
Right, since the Minuteman warrant item is up next, I'm wondering if we can postpone cookies till after the Minuteman discussion.
My goodness. I didn't realize this was going to get so complicated.
Yes, and I promised it would only take us about a minute to pass them out, and let's wait till after.
Okay. We've now whet your appetite, so we'll see. We'll move to Article Six then, which is the Minuteman Regional School District Assessment. The motion is, Mrs. Norris moves that the town appropriate and transfer $1,72,929 from free cash to fund the fiscal year 2018 assessment of the Minuteman Regional School District. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Mrs. Norris, you may speak to your motion.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to say what an honor it is to represent Acton on the Minuteman School Committee. That, for those of you who may not know, Minuteman, just very briefly, Minuteman provides state-of-the-art career and technical education coupled with very rigorous academic education to really prepare students for college and careers. Mr. Moderator, with us tonight, we have Dr. Ed Bequillen, who is the superintendent of Minuteman High School, as well as Kevin Mahoney, the assistant superintendent for finance of Minuteman. And I wanted to ask if we could seek permission to have Dr. Bequillen and Mr. Mahoney address town meeting.
Absolutely. We'll put that to a vote to town meeting members, as they are not citizens of Acton. All those in favor of allowing Dr. Bequillen and Mr. Mahoney to speak, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
In that case, I'd like to turn it over.
I'm hungry, that's all.
I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Bequillen. Thank you.
Dr. Bequillen, welcome this evening. I think by agreement with Mrs. Norris, we gave you eight minutes to speak.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Thank you.
That should be plenty.
Good.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Acton. Overall, our district budget is down 1.41% from this fiscal year, and we are down almost 2% from fiscal year 16. We're down to 10 members now, so we're spreading the cost of the assessments over fewer towns, and the Acton Assessment is up about $75,000. Highlights for Minuteman over the last year: On September 20th, by a margin of almost 70%, the Minuteman district-wide ballot was approved to fund a new regional vocational technical high school on our campus in Lexington and Lincoln. So thank you. We're restored to Level One status by the Department of Education. Our passing rates for English Language Arts and Chemistry, first time taking the test 100%, 99% first-time pass rate in Biology and in Math. I tell you that because 47% of our students are on special education plans of one sort or another, so quite an achievement by our staff and students. Because of our pending bond issuance, we submitted our information to Standard &amp; Poor's and received their highest bond rating for a regional school of SP+1. In our FY '16 audit, we received no management letter whatsoever. Eight or nine years ago, when we started to receive these management letters, they were like a small magazine, so... And I'm really pleased to report that we've been able, over the last 12 months, raised almost $1.2 million for new equipment that's going to be dedicated to the new building. We're in a transition time with our budget. Transition, meaning we're going from a district of 16 towns to a district of 10 towns. We're building a school for 628 students, which is smaller than what the original school was intended. So we're going to continue to have these transition issues, and we have to deal with them head-on. We're level funding all our supplies and materials for this coming-up fiscal year. As I've mentioned, the capital equipment formula that's provided by the Mass School Building Authority, an FFNE, it stands for furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. That formula is the same whether you're a middle school, an elementary school, or a regional vocational technical high school. And as you can imagine, the costs of equipping a vocational technical shop or lab are significant. So we're going to be continuing to seek funds from other sources, but we're going to be also trying to fill that gap as we go forward. We're funding our first year of the debt service on the new building. We're continuing to have to maintain the existing building for a safe environment. We're moving towards an academy model. I'd loved to talk to folks about that for a long time, but we're reconfiguring the bus transportation system. We're going from a, really, a wide-ranging district to a more of a, I call it a puzzle with different pieces missing district. But the savings that we're going to realize in transportation, we're starting to see in this budget. We're continuing to fund our OPEB fairly modestly and our stabilization accounts. We've been trending upward with Acton in terms of its enrollment. When I checked this morning, we have, I believe, 12 applicants for next year already. We usually get four or five more from Acton over the summer, so we're continuing to see that increase. As of this morning, our total applications for the class of 2021 is 210 students. This was a comparison March 1 over March 1. In district, we only have 10 towns now that we're drawing from for in-district, but we're over 120 in-district students. Our target is about 160 accepted freshmen for the coming year. Because our school new building is smaller, we have to start planning for that now. Out-of-district students, about 34, eligible and ineligible. I can talk a little bit about that under enrollment. We're going to continue to utilize our guiding strategies that we've been using for the last year or so. That has resulted in a large increase in applications from in-member and out-of-district communities. There are some towns that are considering joining Minuteman. We're going to continue to engage with them actively, and we're going to be reaching our target enrollment goal probably in two to four years versus three to five. Our overall budget revenue plan, as you've heard before, we're also expecting a slight decrease in our Chapter 70 aid. Our transportation aid is up slightly. We collect tuition from those non-member districts. We're estimating a large drop in that out-of-district revenue, mainly in large part because of a new regulation that was implemented this year by the Department of Education, which has successfully been able to deny access to eighth graders from communities outside of the Minuteman district by requiring those students to stay in their home district and explore vocational technical programs in their home district, even if that home district does not offer the program the student wants. If my career is long enough, I'm going to get this overturned, but in the meantime, we have to deal with a significant shortfall in out-of-district tuition revenue. Certified E&amp;D, we have about $700,000 certified. We're using $600,000 of that in this budget. Overall, our expenditures by state function codes, you'll see a drop in administration. Student instructional services is up a bit. The line 3,000 really reflects the reduction in transportation and other reductions in insurance. Retirement and leases, our healthcare, we're beginning to self-fund our healthcare. We're in a trust with four other vocational schools, and we're realizing some savings from some changes there. And tuition payments, I mention those just because those are payments that Minuteman makes to other vocational technical schools, where students from, let's say, Acton are attending another vocational school because that vocational school offers a program that Minuteman does not offer. So overall, again, the budget is down 1.4%, and the Acton Assessment is up about $75,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bequillen. Do the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. And to the Finance Committee, and your recommendation?
The Finance Committee, Mr. Moderator, proudly supports this recommendation.
Thank you. I will open it up to town meeting members. Don't have to be bashful. You can go up to the microphone. I see no one standing. Oh, wait a minute. I recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
I'm Anne Chang from South Acton. I heard that the town of Lincoln was going to charge rent to the new Minuteman school building. I was wondering if that was true.
Mr. Moderator?
Dr. Bequillen, please answer.
That is not true. They don't own the land. The district owns the land.
Thank you. I see... Again, the speaker at microphone number two.
Bill Mullin, 9 Wilson Lane. She said rent, but I had heard it was building inspection fees and all kinds of town fees that were going to be quite enormous. Could you clarify that?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Dr. Bequillen?
As in any capital project that's funded by the MSBA, there's a budget for fees and permitting fees. We have to pay those fees in Lexington and in Lincoln. Part of the additional costs that are borne by the town of Lincoln have to be offset by the district. So the town of Lincoln, because this has been a discussion point, sometimes a little bit sharp discussion point over the years with Lincoln, they have set up special acc- bit sharp discussion point over the years with Lincoln, they have set up special accounts that our permitting fees will be deposited into to offset the costs of additional consultants, peer review folks, engineering folks that the town of Lincoln would have to hire in order to look over our plans. Once the project is completed, any unspent funds would be returned to the district. So, we believe we have a fair process for paying a reasonable amount of fees associated with the new building. And I will mention, we're going to be in the new building a year earlier than has been projected, September 2019.
Thank you. Now, I see no one else standing, so I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion as read under Article 6, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now it's cookie time. We will take a very brief pause, although the next article is the CPC direct appropriation. So, if the members of the Community Preservation Committee want to come down to the front, this would be a good opportunity. We'll make sure we save you some cookies.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
I would just like to thank Glenn Brand and Joanne Campbell and Eva Skorodick and you for being flexible and allowing us this, what I hope is a sort of lightning effect.
I'll take one or two, sure. You need that chocolate to keep going. Thank you.
It's all chance what people...
I would give Tatum chocolate, but I shouldn't tell you about that. I'd have to check out with the partnership. I can't do that without consulting.
All set? Okay. Let's get back to business here, please. We're moving on to Article 7, which is the Community Preservation Program Direct Appropriation from Fund Balances. And I will read the motion. Mr. Foster moves that the town transfer to and from the Community Preservation Fund and appropriate, reappropriate, or set aside for current or later appropriation. $1,275,284, all as set forth in the article. And two, authorize the town manager to expend or set aside amounts as set forth in the article and in compliance with conditions to be noted in the Community Preservation Committee's award letters. Do I have a second? The motion has been made and seconded. Good evening, Mr. Foster.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator.
You may speak to your motion. By agreement, you have eight minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. And we hope to be a major beneficiary of the cookie rush. My name is Walter Foster at Three Jesse Drive. I am the Chair of the CPC, and with me tonight is our entire committee. Just raise your hands when I introduce you. Bill Ailsbury, Peter Berry, Victoria Brier, Dean Charter. Amy Green is not here tonight. She couldn't be with us. Carolyn Kilpatrick. Ken Segiya Hughes has been serving for many years on this board and many others, but recently left, and Nancy Cobb is the newest member. Susan Mitchell Hart, Joe Will, and Ray Yakobi. The CPA is in its 14th year and helps fund open space, historic, affordable housing, and recreational projects. Details about this year's appropriations can be found on pages 32 through 41 of your warrant. This year, as was the case last year, we had more projects requests than we had money. This first slide simply shows where the money came from that we have available to spend this year. It was a total of $1.196 million. That's made up of $913,000 from the tax surcharge, $188,000 from the state, interest earned of almost $16,000, a recapture from prior projects of $71,000, and about $8,000 was left unspent from last year's fund, for a total of nearly the $1.2 million. In addition, we have currently $1.95 million in the open space set-aside account comprised of previous allocations that is a separate fund dedicated to the acquisition and preservation of open space. All of the details about all of our projects are contained in your warrant, and this slide grouped seven of those projects that you have seen or voted on on numerous occasions at prior town meetings. The amounts for each are as follows. For the open space set-aside, we're allocating $450,000. For the Acton Housing Authority, $75,000. For the Community Housing Program Fund of $60,000. A Regional Housing Services Program of $25,000. Preservation of the Simon Hosmer House at $48,000. Preservation of the Ironwork Farms Jones Tavern at $34,282. And an allocation of $55,045 for administrative expenses. The next five slides are basically the projects that you haven't seen before. The first asks to appropriate $24,000 for three items at the Acton Arboretum. A nice new cedar arbor that is pictured here, replacement of the old kiosk at the entranceway, and reconstruction of a culvert. Friends of the Arboretum have also donated some funds as part of this project. Many of you have noticed the construction across Acton of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail connecting Acton to the already-completed portion that goes from Westford to Lowell. This project seeks to allocate $170,000 for the engineering design plan to build what is called Phase 2B. This will complete the trail throughout Acton. It starts in East Acton and is the portion pictured here that goes over Route 2 and connects to Concord. This link will be the final portion of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail through Acton and is one of the best-leveraged projects that we bring to you. The Concord portion of the engineering and design part is approximately $900,000, and then the federal and the state government then allocates all of the construction costs, estimated to be at $9.24 million. Effectively, tonight's appropriation is less than 2% of the entire project cost, and you complete the rail trail over Route 2. Another project seeks $28,000 to install a well on the Morrison property. This would provide a consistent water source for the Victory Gardens that are present there and have been for many years. There are two NARA projects. First is $25,000 to expand the upper parking lot. This is located near the Miracle Fields, another CPC project as NARA improves and increases its traffic. It helps provide better circulation and expanded access to that portion of NARA. And finally, NARA is also seeking to install a two-stall accessible restroom. It would be located basically directly across from the new picnic pavilion, also a CPC project, and it would allow for better service of the many crowds who attend NARA, both the concerts as well as the rented pavilion. And we ask for your support in this year's project allocations.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Turn to the Board of Selectmen for their recommendation on this motion. Mr. Berry.
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend that town meeting vote to approve this article.
And to the Finance Committee and your recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee also unanimously recommended this article. Every year, the CPC goes through an extensive process of vetting their projects and allotting the money they do have. This year, as in past years, they've had more requests than they had funds, so they really did their work. NARA was important to the town. Therefore, the town Finance Committee recommends this article.
Thank you. I will now open it up to town meeting members. I recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
Yes, David Hahn, 105 School Street. Normally, I'm at the pro microphone for all CPC projects. However, I think Item C in this list is premature and completely out of sequence. It's $75,000 for studies and planning, planning and pro forma development, et cetera, for 53 River Street. I'll remind people that the town purchased 53 River Street last October for approximately $900,000 in free cash. There were no set uses for that purchase, whether it was affordable housing, or open space, or recreation, or whatever it is. There were no definitive uses, and I think appropriating $75,000 to study housing for the site is completely out of sync in regard to this property. Normally, when we acquire a property like this, this happens to be 12 and 1/2 acres, of which some is possibly buildable. What do we do? We set up a master plan committee. They go through a vetting process of what might be appropriate for the site. They hold reviews. They hold public hearings. They hire a consultant to help them decide how to illustrate these concepts to the town, and the town gets to say so about what goes on the property. Now, affordable housing may or may not be appropriate for the site. Perhaps it is, but the fact is, all kinds of consistencies in town have their eye on that parcel: recreation, open space, historic preservation. And this money should not be appropriated for any study on a particular use unless you have a master plan in place. And so far, there's been no effort by the town, I happen to live across the street and know very well, to set up a master plan committee. So, we need to set up the committee. You need to determine the uses and best uses, one of which might be affordable housing, and then you move forward with a more detailed study of a particular use. So, I ask that Item C be deleted from the list. I'm all in favor of all the other ones, but Item C is completely out of sync, premature, and the Housing Authority should come back and either present it when we have a master plan, or if they need input to decide whether affordable housing is even right for the site, it should be part of the master plan process and not be circumvented with the CPC award. Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Deborah Symes, Concord Road. I have a couple of questions about Item K, which is the expanded lot at NARA. So, I'm glad to see the number because when I saw the draft warrant, it didn't say the number of spaces, so it's 24. My two questions are, well, at least two questions are, what kind of paving materials are we talking about? I'm hoping they're permeable. And the second is, are we taking trees down to do this? And if so, how many-ish?
Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not sure I know all of the responses to that. I don't believe there are any trees being taken down. The location, as you can see, where the arrow is, is actually where the fields already exist.
Okay.
So, this part, there are literally no trees in that section, based on my memory and what the Recreation Commission presented to us. So, I don't think there are any. In terms of the impervious or the pavement, my understanding is that they have, are engineering it both for water flow and that they'll use the town's best practices to that. And as part of execution, that's something I'm sure you can share with the town and to take the best steps possible to use the right type of surfacing structure.
Okay. Can I quickly do a follow-up?
You may.
I just need to know whom at town I should talk to. Andrea?
Mr. Foster?
So, the Recreation Commission will have oversight of that. So, Kathy Fochman and Tom Tidman.
Thank you.
Sure.
I recognize the speaker at, well, it looks like the speaker at microphone number two is the same speaker.
Well, I was informed by a former selectman that I guess I need to make a motion in regard to Article C or Item C in the list. Is that correct?
Well, actually, let me cut you off because I think I know where you're going, and I've already discussed this with Mr. Foster. When we get ready to vote on the various items under the CPC motion, we'll handle it like the consent agenda, so I'll read each item off, and if you choose to hold one of those items, such as the one you spoke to, just say "hold," and if two people say "hold," then we will vote that one separately. Now, I recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Catherine Black, Central Street. I have a question. I believe I heard that the revenues were approximately $100,000 less than you're talking about spending. Where does that extra $100,000 come from, please?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Foster? The spending, the total amount that we're recommending to spend is 1.189. So, if you look on page 33, and the amount that we have as revenues is 1.196, so there will be some funds, very little funds, but there will be some funds left over, so we're not appropriating the entire amount.
Does that answer your question, or no? I didn't think it did. Why don't we try this again?
Okay. I was taking notes as you put the motion up, and I thought that it said $1,275,284 was going to be appropriated.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so that's $100,000 more than you've got.
So, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
May I respond to?
Sure.
I guess it's a question. If you look right on page 33, under the 1.189, there's an appropriation of $85,421. That amount is for the debt service for the Wright Hill, and that is being taken from the existing set-aside open space, which is exactly what it says right there on the page.
Ah, okay.
So, that's the missing, I think that's the missing amount that you're looking at, but it's not from new revenues this year.
Okay.
So, we're not appropriating more than the revenues that came in. We're taking the $85,000 from the $1.9 million in the open space set-aside, and that's what makes up the difference.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
I recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Tara Fredericks from West Acton. And I want to understand, I have a couple of slides to show about 40B, and so you're suggesting that that would happen during the hold period, or?
No. No, the hold period only has to do with the voting, so if you have comments to make on any of the items under here, now is the time to make them.
So, I have some general comments. Should I start with my general comments? And then go with my slides?
Well, you have two minutes to make your comments, so...
Well, I'd like to get my slides up, and while they're waiting, can I talk about the other ones?
Absolutely.
So, I agree with David Hahn relative to a master plan. I think it's only fair to the residents to have a discussion about what we want there. I agree with Deb on everything she was saying, and I also would like to note that the, about permeable paving, and I would like to say the Commission on Disability supports the arboretum improvements if nobody comes forward for that. Now, the slides are up. What I'm showing here, and this is a slide about Acton's income distribution, and this comes from the census, and it was published under the To Live in Acton, one of the housing booklets that we made up ourselves. And so, on this slide, if you can see it, the top oval circle is what 40B is developing. This is what they develop because their profit margins will allow for this level of income and not below. And so, what I'm trying to show people is that the actual need is below $50,000 a year, which kind of goes in between the 50 to 75 in there, too, because if you're a family of four trying to live on, 60 grand is pretty hard. And then I tried my next slide, shows you what we're actually building. And so, I want people to understand what they're... And so I want people to understand what they're fueling in Category D, the Community Housing Program, and the Regional Housing Services Program, for paying developers, closing fees, sewer betterment fees. They're basically subsidizing corporations to build housing that we don't actually need. And so that's what I'm saying here, and I want people to just understand this, then urge the CPC to fund what we really need, the Acton Housing Authority to build units, not actually build units, we have plenty of units. We have 2,500 units on Route 2A that are market rate affordable, that all we have to do is buy them, indeed restrict them, and either give them to the AHA, or resell them, and we can satisfy our quote-unquote "social need" as opposed to this market demand, which is not a public necessity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I recognize the speaker at microphone number three.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Wallinghoff, Mohegan Road. And in regards to Section C, the Acton Housing Authority and the River Street property, my question's for the CPC. When we discussed this particular River Street property at the last town meeting, there was a discussion of using CPC funds to purchase the property rather than using free cash from the town. And I think at the time you said you were going to evaluate that option, and I was wondering if you had evaluated using CPC funds versus free cash from the town?
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah.
At that meeting, what I answered, that of course, it's not up to the CPC, that that project has to be brought to the CPC by an applicant. In this case, it would be the town that would bring that to the CPC. So that project was not brought to us. The CPC, of course, remains open to any project applicant that comes. It would have to be the next cycle, but it's not up to the CPC. And if I may clarify, Mr. Moderator.
Certainly.
On both of these, it's very important to understand that the allocation to, for any affordable housing particularly, is an allocation to the AHA. The CPC does not determine that we're going to go by, or what we're going to do with property X. That's done by, in this case, it's the Acton Housing Authority for that particular appropriation, the one that was talked about as Part Number C. So the CPC, if some, if an applicant comes to us with a specific project, then we, of course, address that. My understanding, and it'll be clarified as part of the discussion I'm sure we'll have on holding of Part C, is that these funds under C and others are general appropriation funds, which are then allocated at the discretion of either the Acton Community Housing Authority or the Acton Housing Authority. So on that, on the River Street property, it would be the town and the Board of Selectmen who would make that determination to come to CPC and ask for an allocation.
So that would be wonderful if the town or the Board of Selectmen would consider bringing an application to the CPC for using CPC funds for this property. Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize the speaker at microphone number three.
Bob Van Meter, Vice Chair of the Acton Community Housing Corporation, Half Moon Hill. I want to respond to the prior comments by Ms. Fredericks. She actually opposed the item that would provide housing for the lowest-income people. The Acton Housing Authority does house our lowest-income residents, but there is a need for other affordable housing, as the Community Housing Program supports low-modern-income homeowners, and the Community Housing Corporation has supported a number of low-modern-income homeowners becoming homeowners with down payment assistance, as well as tracking the affordable housing stock using the Regional Housing Service Organization. So I recommend both of those, all three of those housing items in the CPC item here.
Thank you. I recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Tara Fredericks, again, I don't believe that I opposed something that I think is actually affordable and sustainable. I may have opposed something that I thought was wasteful development, but I came here to this mic to not rebut that, but to ask a question, two questions. One about the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, because when I was a selectman, we had been shown a picture that showed the overpass being a beautiful stone bridge. And when I look at the design now, at least I've seen variations on it. One of them shows kind of linko blocks like you see up on Route 2A, and another one that Concord is pushing that has actually fieldstone, you know, beautiful round stones. And so I think that we deserve to have beauty in our lives, and I think that we should go and push for the one that we originally voted for, which was the beautiful stone bridge. That's the first comment. The second comment, if I can make within my two minutes, which I can, is I have a question about the Morrison Farm well. And the reason I have this question is because I heard some water nerds, with all due respect, talking about this, as if it, there were questions about whether it was wise to dig this well. And so I'd like to hear what the Acton Water District thinks about the well. Is there anybody here that knows a little bit about what the Water District?
Well, Ms. Fredericks, we're here talking about the CPC article.
Isn't there Morrison Farm well, is a CPC item, right?
But that, I don't believe has anything to do with the Water District. If Mr. Foster wants to comment on that, or has someone here, he can, but this has nothing to do with the Water District, I don't believe.
Well, the reason that I say this is not, we go, we'll discuss this in the water petitions, but that if we continue to look at our water resources as something that one entity controls or the other entity controls, or people point fingers at each other, and then nobody controls anything, then we'll continue to have regional water problems. So I'd like to know, or that we're at least coordinating with the Acton Water District relative to this Morrison Farm well.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Mr. Foster.
Sure. During the presentation, all the applicants come forward, and the Acton Water District, there was a letter in our file, which I can get to, but it's all part of the public documents that supports the project. They actually asked the town to, if you will get off of the public water system there, and that there were studies done about both the aquifer and otherwise. So at least I can say from a CPC perspective, that the Acton Water District had weighed in, and in fact, were very much behind the project, and asked the town to do this.
I recognize the speaker at microphone number three.
Fran D. Osman, 16 Half Moon Hill. Is now, or when you have people hold things, the right time to speak to a specific item?
No, we're speaking to all the different items now, so now is the time.
Okay. I just wanted to take note that the Housing Authority study item doesn't just focus on River Street, it focuses on the general need for Housing Authority housing. It mentions both the Main Street property and River Street. And I just wanted to appreciate Bob Woodley, who's on the Housing Authority, and also on ACHC? Oh, okay. Anyway, who has some great ideas that I've heard about that potential for housing on River Street, which we were sort of hearing about as we were preparing to purchase it. That included having people live there and take care of the parkland around it, and it just sounded very appealing. So I wanted to just speak in support of that spending money to focus on housing, questions of Housing Authority. It isn't all focused on that land, and should we put housing on that land? It's more general than that, it sounds to me.
Thank you. I see no one else standing, so the procedure that I alluded to, oop, just made it in the nick of time. Recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
Fran Vazella, Vanderbilt Road. I just had a question. I thought the Community Preservation Program was for open space, and I'm just, I guess I'm confused, because I don't understand how housing gets involved with open space. That was just my.
Mr. Foster.
Yes, so the, by law, the Community Housing Act, which was adopted by Acton, is, can be used for four different purposes. It can be used for purchasing of open space. It can be used for the preservation of historic resources. It can be used for affordable housing, and it can also be used for recreational projects. By law, 10% of your yearly appropriation must go to the following three categories: must go to open space, affordable housing, as well as historic.
Okay.
In the 14 years that CPC has been here, we have done projects in every single category every single year, and there's often great parity. We try to, we try. We don't get a choice of what programs or what projects come to us. Affordable housing has been funded at almost a 33% level from, for 14 years under the CPC in this town.
Okay, I guess I've been asleep.
Okay, now I see no one else standing. So the way we will do the vote on this article is the way, similar to the way in which we do the consent agenda. So I will go through each of the different items, A through N, and if folks, town meeting members wish to vote on any of them separately, please say "hold". Two or more do, we will hold that for a separate vote. Those that are not held, we will vote as a package. So I will read the letter for each of the different items for which there are recommended appropriation amounts. Item A1, item A2, item B, item C.
Hold.
Item C is held. Item D, item D is held. Item E, item F, item G, item H, item I. I hear one "hold", I didn't hear more than one.
Hold. Hi, Dad. (laughter)
I'm not sure, does the family get more than one? No. I'm sorry, that was item I is held. Item J, item K, item L, item M, item N. Okay, so what we will do is we will first vote on all of the items that were not held. So all the items except for C, D, and I. All those in favor of the motion, please say "aye".
Aye.
Any opposed, say "nay". The motion carries unanimously. We will now move to item C. Acton Housing Authority Development Acquisition for New Affordable Housing Units. All those in favor of the motion for item C, please say "aye".
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say "nay".
Nay.
That's going to require an electronic vote. So, does everybody have their clickers? And turn their clickers on, please.
Can I speak?
Okay. Does everybody have their clickers turned on, please? Is everyone ready to vote? Do you have a point of order? Microphone number two, point of order.
I don't know if it's a point of order. I just want to be clear that we know what we're voting on, because there was some confusion among some of us about which item.
I will make it clear.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I know I'm new at this, but I'm catching on fast. So, we are voting on item number C, under the CPC appropriations. Everyone has their clicker on. If you are in favor of item C, press "aye". If you're opposed, press "e". I will now declare that the voting window is open. Please vote.
Just close. (inaudible).
We don't have a slide for C.
The voting window is closed.
No, we didn't vote. (inaudible) this person right here, we haven't voted.
Okay, we'll try this again. I knew, I knew there would potentially be difficulties here, so we'll try this again. If, do we need to cancel votes if people have already voted, or not?
If you have a point of order, you can raise it in any microphone that you want to mention.
Okay, we will, we will start the vote over with...
Do we turn them on or off?
Please turn your clickers on. If we're all ready to vote, we will vote. We are voting on item C, the Acton Housing Authority Development Acquisition for New Affordable Housing Units. We ready to vote? We will vote. The voting window is now open. We're all set. Okay, the voting window is now closed. I understand, we're waiting for the cafeteria votes. Okay, we're good? There's no votes on the cafeteria, so we can just tally the electronic votes, please. The motion under article, or number item C, has failed. We will now move to item D. This is the Community Housing Program Fund. Keep your clickers on, please. Are we all ready to vote? Or actually, wait, I'm sorry, let me take a voice vote first. Right? Let's try it by voice first. All those in favor of appropriating under item D, please say "aye".
Aye.
All those opposed, say "nay".
Nay.
Ah, that was easy. Item D passes. And we will move finally to item I, Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, Phase 2B. Again, we'll do a voice vote, you can turn your clickers off, hopefully. All those in favor of appropriating item E, please say "aye".
Aye.
All those opposed, say "nay". Item I passes.
Point of order?
Yes, what's your point of order?
I think that it says item E, we're voting on item I.
I'm sorry, I thought, sure, I said item I. I said E. Excuse me. Okay, we'll try this one more time. Item I. All those in favor of appropriating under item I, please say "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed, please say "nay". The motion carries unanimously. Okay, we will now move to Article 8, Purchased Fire Apparatus and Equipment. Thank you, members of the Community Preservation Committee. The motion is, this is a somewhat lengthy motion, "Mr. Berry Moves That the Town Appropriate $721,750 to be expended by the town manager for the purpose set forth in the article, including costs incidental and related thereto, and to, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the appro- And to, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $700,000 under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 as amended, and raise from general revenues $21,750 for the payment of interest and underwriting costs on such borrowing, and further that any premium received upon the sale of the bonds, less the cost of preparing, issuing, and marketing them, and any accrued interest received upon the delivery of the bonds, may be applied to the costs of the project, and to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for the project by like amount, and further that the town manager be authorized to sell, trade, or dispose of vehicles and equipment being replaced, and to expend any proceeds so received. Do I have a second? Mr. Cadillac, your point of order.
What you just read is not what's on the screen.
What I believe I read is what I was given as the motion on Thursday, or Friday. I believe what is on the screen is actually an earlier version, I believe. I think we should probably take the motion off the screen then, please. What I, what I read, I've conferred with council and with the town clerk, and what I read is in fact the correct motion. I believe we had a second, so Mr. Berry, you may speak to your motion, you indicated three minutes. I will also remind town meeting members that this requires a two-thirds vote, so when we come to that point, I'll remind you again. Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a ordinary replacement of vehicle that has reached its useful life. Estimated cost is $700,000. Selectmen are proposing a bonding of this purchase over 10 years. Both the Selectmen and the FinCom have recommended this replacement of this pumper truck. Here's the truck, and included in this motion is this updated jaws-of-life equipment. Vehicles apparently are now too difficult to get into with the, with the outdated equipment to extract people in accidents. So this is a replacement of a 16-year-old fire engine, has over 320,000 operational miles, carries critical life-saving equipment, is a scheduled replacement, and again, both the Board of Selectmen recommend the town meeting approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Finance Committee have its recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends that it's part of the regular replacement of our fire equipment.
Thank you. Open it up to town meeting members for questions or debate. Recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
Deborah Seines, Concord Road. How long does this kind of pumper truck last?
They, they, it's, it's, the slide said over 320,000 operational miles.
They actually calculate the use of these vehicles by hours that they're in operation. This is a 16-year-old fire engine, so the number of hours that it's been used over the 16 years calculates out to 320,000 miles of driving an ordinary vehicle, I guess.
And can I say one thing? So, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Okay. So should we assume that the life of the vehicle is longer than the life of the bond?
Well, if this one lasted 16 years, we're proposing a 10-year bond, so yes.
All right, thank you.
I see no one else standing. So we will vote. As I said before, this requires a two-thirds vote, and, and as I indicated at the beginning of the evening, I wish to take the two-thirds votes by using the electronic voting or the clickers. So again, I would ask you to turn your clickers on, please. Is everyone ready to vote? I think everyone's ready, okay. The timer is set at 30 minutes, or 30 seconds. Only seems that long, right? The voting window is now closed. Ms. Cadillac, I'm informed by the clerk that the cafeteria voters are not voting, so you don't have to go out there. And we see that it is almost unanimous. I declare that the motion passes by a greater than two-thirds vote. Okay, we will now move to Article 9. And I want to go check on the score of the basketball game, so I'm going to turn this over to our Assistant Temporary Moderator, Ms. Berry, who's going to come down and handle
Thank you. First of all, thank you for your unanimous support earlier this evening, and I would just like to point out that Mr. Berry and I are not related, in case that was ever a question. And we are on Article 9, Capital, Infrastructure, and Design. This requires a majority vote. Mr. Berry moves that the town appropriate $1,320,000 to be expended by the town manager for the purposes set forth in the article, including costs incidental, incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, $1,250,000 will be transferred from overlay surplus, and $70,000 will be transferred from free cash. Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded, Mr. Berry, to your motion. And I, I believe you have eight minutes for this.
Okay. This involves four items of capital improvement. Put a new roof on the library for $1,156,000. A new boiler at the center fire station for $94,000. Inspection study of Prospect and Main Street that we talked about in the budget presentation for 40 grand. And the bike lane rail trail study we also spoke about for $30,000, for the total of $1,320. The HVAC equipment on the roof is over 20 years old, we saw in the earlier slides, the library expansion was built in 1997. They're using buckets now to catch the raindrops that are coming through the roof. It was identified in the townwide study as a Priority 1 item to be replaced as soon as possible. Center Street Fire Station, the Center Fire Station Boiler is a boiler that was transferred from Town Hall, model year 1984, it's 33 years old. There are no parts to replace defective equipment. So it was identified in the townwide study also as a Priority 1 item. Main Street and Prospect, Main Street and Prospect Street Traffic Study again will identify improvements that would be made to improve the safety of that intersection. Here's a picture of it, if you're not familiar with it. I'm sure everybody's been, tried to struggle to get through it at one point or another. Bike Lane Rail Trail Study is again a Selectmen's goal, identified as connecting up the Assabett River Rail Trail and the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail in North Acton. And that is, there's one other point, going back to the costs of these items. The Selectmen voted to, well, actually, the assessors voted to release $1,250,000 to cover the costs of both the roof on the library and the center fire station boiler, out of a fund that the assessors control called the overlay account. That's a state fund that the assessors are required to keep to cover possible abatements they might have to make for real estate tax appeals that go to the appellate tax board. Strictly controlled the amounts in that fund by the Department of Revenue at the state level. They determined there were excess funds in there. The assessors voted to release those funds, and the Selectmen applied them to those two Priority 1 items, on the theory that it would be better to pay for them with those funds rather than bond them and thereby save the interest costs, especially in light of the large capital projects that may be coming before town meeting in the next few years.
Thank you. Do we have a recommendation from the Selectmen?
The Selectmen unanimously voted to recommend...
Wouldn't make sense, sorry. Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Yes, Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this item, Article 9. It is worth noting, however, just, this may be a fine point, but the town is in the process of launching its capital need study in earnest, detail by detail. And one of the things that we'll often hear is that such-and-so piece of equipment or installation is at its useful life. That's the theoretical useful life. And it's a cautionary note, but it is not by itself a justification for replacing a piece of capital equipment. You'll notice that in, in Article, or in paragraph B, they make a point of saying that parts are no longer available, that the, the model that's installed is obsolete, and it's clear from that, that yes, it's at its useful life, but we will also face increasing difficulties in repairing it and keeping it going. Many pieces of gear, on the other hand, are mainstream, many parts are still available for them, the technical advice that we need to keep them going is readily available. And under those circumstances, it's important to note that there's a judgment call whenever we're faced with a capital need like this. The first flag that goes up is that it's beyond its useful life, and that's fair. But the second question, which was answered in number B here, is that it is not wise for us to continue to keep it because of other reasons, and those reasons should be set, set forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the town meeting members? The speaker at microphone three.
That's me. A little bit more information about what Selecton Berry said about where the money comes from. Overlay is a reserve against, as he said, property taxes, abatements, non-payment, and so forth. When the, when the assessors decide that for a certain year, the overlay money, whatever's left, is no longer needed, it's declared a surplus, and normally goes back to free cash. So, by using it this way, and by the way, that it's legal, no question there, it bypasses the normal process of knowing how much free cash we have, what it's used for. This one and a quarter million dollars does not appear on the spreadsheet on page 23. It's basically an end run around the whole budget process. I don't think that's a good way to do it. I will repeat, it's legal. But we had a discussion, could have been a much longer one, about use of reserves. This, in effect, is a use of an additional one and a quarter million dollars of what would be, what would have been the reserves for this year. And I think the Finance Committee should take a hard look at this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Hi, Jim Snyder-Grant, 18 Half Moon Hill. I wanted to speak to the HVAC work on the library roof. At a recent Green Acton meeting, we were reviewing the warrant articles, and this one raised a lot of interest and concern, because anytime we're spending large money on our heating systems, we have an opportunity to reduce the amount of fossil fuels we're using. We're in the middle of a climate emergency, the Selectmen have affirmed that they want to reduce the use of fossil fuels and greenhouse gas emissions in town. So it was concerning to us that there was no explicit statement about an environmental evaluation of this change, and there was no, there's no explicit policy yet that capital improvements undergo an environmental review. So that's a, that's a goal going forward for Green Acton, to work with the capital improvements process, to make that explicit. So we did come and speak to town staff, and I'm happy to report that, well, two things. One is that the big opportunity to save fossil fuels there is with the boiler in the basement, which has sadly recently blown up and been replaced by an exactly identical unit. So we lost our chance there to take, make an improvement because of the urgency of the situation. The units on the rooftop, on the other hand, being 20 years old and being replaced with modern units means that they will be more efficient. They'll be using 15 to 25% less power, and this will be a great chance for some reduction in fossil fuel use. So I'm, I'm speaking in favor of the amendment, but I, I'm in favor of the motion, but I just wanted people to be aware that anytime there's a heating HVAC change warrant article, that these are good questions to be asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
Tom Wolf, Sol Mel Road. I just had a clarifying question about the library roof. I understand this, part of the motion is covering HVAC equipment, and at least, is it just part of the library roof, or the whole library roof that is being replaced?
Mr. Berry.
It's, it's the entire roof, and the HVAC equipment is sitting on top of the roof.
Go ahead.
So does that include the slate portion of the roof, which I would assume would last longer than 20 years?
I, I believe this is just the addition. I'm assuming, I don't know for sure, I'm assuming the slate portion is probably the 1889 portion. Okay, well, I'm going to need some help from...
Yes, yes.
It, it's not the entire roof, it's the part you kind of can't see, it's, it's kind of depressed, it's that area, so the slate roof is not being changed.
Okay, just the rubber man, very proud.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Kyle Coulter, West Side Drive. I just had a question in regards to what happens, not only when it reaches the end of its useful life, but it reaches the end of its functional life. And I think Mr. Snyder-Grant spoke in regards to that. If, if it completely fails, do we, I mean, do we have to wait till the next town meeting to vote on it, or is it going to be replaced?
You talking about a particular item, or something else? I mean, a good example is the boiler in the library failed, they had no heat. We were able to, because we have a bottom line budget, the town manager is able to access all the accounts in town to move money around to cover those kind of emergencies, and he was able to pay for that out of this year's budget without having to come to town meeting to ask for money to, to replace the boiler. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
I believe it does, thank you.
Speaker at microphone one.
Just to, to our hydroics, West Acton, just a clarification, the fire station boiler has been replaced already?
No, it was transferred from Town Hall when the Town Hall boiler was, was replaced, is my understanding, that's accurate, okay.
Okay. And so, the library HVAC system, is that gas-powered, or is that electric?
I believe it's gas.
So I just want to point out that by buying these items, we are making a commitment to another 20 or 30 years of fossil fuel. And so I urge us to not continue to make that long-term investment in fossil fuel, but to look for alternatives. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone two.
Murdoza from 22 Hemlock Lane. I had a question regarding the roof. Is there a plan to install solar panels on the roof? The new roof?
I, the town manager may be able to help me on this. It's a very complicated, configured roof that has lots of valleys in it, and so it's my understanding that it wouldn't be suitable for putting solar panels on it, but I don't know if the town has explored that more. No, that, that's correct, what you said, Peter. That's correct.
Okay.
It's not an appropriate configuration to accommodate solar panels.
Thank you. Seeing no one else standing, we will take a vote. This takes a majority. We'll go by voice. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. It is unanimous. Motion passes. Thanks. I got the score. Is your team winning?
We will move to Article 10. Before we get there, I'll give you an update at halftime. Gonzaga leads 35-32, if anybody's interested. I don't have any money this year, so. Anyway, Article 10, Land Acquisition 516 Massachusetts Avenue. The motion is, Ms. Osman moves that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchased, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, the real property as set forth in the article on such terms and conditions as the selectmen may determine, and appropriate, appropriate and transfer $35,000 from free cash to fund said acquisition and related transaction costs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Osman, you requested five minutes to speak to your motion, so you may proceed.
Or less.
Or less.
Um, this, there's a little addition, a little additional information before I talk about this. This is about a purchase of land that was offered, that is in West Acton. I had heard, and I'll get into why it was offered. I had heard previous to this that there was interest from the business community in additional parking along the street, and then I was told by town staff, don't worry about that yet because we've had an offer from someone there for, to sell us some land for parking. So I thought, oh, that's great. Today, we found out that the person who lives in the house right next to it didn't know. Now, we don't have any responsibility, there's no legal reason that the town should tell the person in the next house that they were buying this, but I can totally understand that upset if, if I looked out my window and suddenly realized that the town was buying and putting in a parking lot right next to my house. So I'm giving this presentation with that knowledge, that that just came to our attention, that the person who lived next to this house didn't know that this was being considered. The small plot of land is some infill land that's right next to this multi-unit house in West Acton, sort of on the east end of West Acton on Mass Ave. It was offered for sale from its owner specifically for parking at a price of $35,000, which would be paid from taxation. There'll be at least 12 parking spaces and an appropriate number of handicapped and bicycle parking. It was suggested that semi-permeable pavement be used, but instead, the pavement will tilt toward the street and stormwater will be caught by the stormwater drains in that direction. The reason for that is that the adjoining land is owned by the water district, and they might want to dig a well, so they didn't want the runoff from the parking lot coming The lot is located such that it can provide parking for West Acton businesses, for employees, as well as customers, and for gardener playground. In addition, there is the opportunity to park and take a new West Acton hiking loop, drawn with a green dotted line on this map. Now that the town has bought or was donated land along Fort Ponbrook, it is, I think it's Fort Ponbrook there, between Mass Ave and Arlington Street on the right side of this map, hikers and strollers can circle the village and enjoy the new lands. I might remind them that they could also park there and walk just five or 10 minutes to the left on this map and reach Wright Hill Conservation Land, which is for a village at good amount of conservation land. I encourage you to vote for this reasonably priced purchase for parking. I'm saying that, and I'm meanwhile having, I, I'm interested to sort of hear what people think about this question, about what it would be like to live in a house and suddenly find out that the town was buying it. I mean, this has been out, this has, you know, the warrant has been out, and the information has been duly shared, but I do think it was an oversight that we didn't specifically talk to them. So I, I wasn't aware of that until today, and neither were others. Thanks.
Finance committee have a recommendation?
The finance committee approves this article.
We'll now open it up for discussion, questions and debate. I recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
David Hon, 105 School Street, and I'll comment as Chair of the Historic District Commission. We spent many, many years working on the Wave project across the street, and the people in that condominium building, we've heard, are less than thrilled with that development across the street. You know, there is a beer joint, if you want to call it that, west end. I won't call it, I shouldn't call it a joint, a restaurant across the street. And so, you know, the noise, the increased traffic, the lighting, et cetera, et cetera. So they've already, you know, we've heard that they've already feel like they've taken a beating already. I am in favor of more parking in that area, but I think you, I don't know, didn't the Conservation Commission notify these people? Didn't you run it by them? Because they have to notify Butters, so how could this person not know in that condo building? But anyway, I think you need to work with them to come up with a parking lot design that may be better screened or more amenable. You know, do the cars park head in towards their property, or do you park them the other way? You know, so that they're looking at the back end of the car instead of having the cars right up next to their house. So I would urge you, having heard a lot of feedback from those people in that condo building, to work with them very closely. Thank you.
Recognize the speaker at microphone number three.
Hello, Lynn Parker, Mass Ave. I live in that condo building, and today was the first time I heard about this. And I have a couple issues. One is transparency. This parcel of land was offered, if I understand correctly, only for a parking lot. So if we buy that land as a town, we cannot use it for any other purpose. There was no, as far as I know, there's been no studies, there's been no conversation with the neighbors regarding this. So if we say tonight, let's buy it, then we're saying yes to a parking lot that we haven't even fully discussed yet. I find that lacking transparency is a mild thing to say. I have not seen designs, and I certainly was not notified, nor were the other three members of the condominium association. The design you just showed shows cars pulling up with headlights into my windows. And yes, the development across the street was a problem. It is certainly a problem to go from having woods across the street to having rock music at 11:30 at night. And so, yes, I do believe we have taken a beating, and we've been pretty reasonable about it. The transparency, the lack of transparency for this new proposal, especially coming from someone who is insisting the land only be purchased for a parking lot, when it's the butt's land that could be used for water, I find very troubling. My second question is that if this parking lot is put in, we are maintaining a parking lot. As lovely as the suggestion of the route is, if you've been down to this center of the Wave project, there will be no parking for anyone to go on those trails. That will be full of the people who work in that building. So I understand the congestion, but I don't think this tiny 12-person lot that the town will now have to maintain, it'll be part of the maintenance cost for the rest of time, and the, as I said, lack of transparency is incredibly troubling. I do not feel respected as a citizen of this community.
Thank you. Recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
I hear you, Ms. Parker. And I will say that, yes, for people who are town meeting people who look at this thing and look at every page, yeah, we noticed this. I knew it. And I said to myself, gee, I wonder how Lynn Parker feels about that. And what David says about the cons comm, a cons comm doesn't notify a Butters until there's a specific project. So this is buying a piece of property for a specific use without having gone through the cons comm process to identify whether that specific use is appropriate to the wetlands. I have an issue with deciding to take the water instead of recharge it and send it down a storm drain. I have an issue with this drawing, which suggests those three old houses are still there, when it's really a mall. It's the biggest building in, in West Acton, and I think that's inappropriate to show us without showing us what you, what this, what the village is coming to. And I have a problem with the, and I have a minute left, so you're gonna get it. I have a problem with the West Acton Mall, who spent 10 years telling us that they'd have plenty of parking for everybody. They said, please, back me up on this, David. They said there was gonna be so much parking that there was gonna be parking for the rest of West Acton. And in fact, none of the parking will, from the Wave Mall, the West Acton Mall, will go into the rest of West Acton. There'll be so much parking, they said. And instead, what's happening, they're pushing all the parking into West Acton, so the rest of the stores are having trouble. And now we're suggesting buying this, and if you, we buy this, it should be guaranteed to be daytime only and gardener field only, frankly, because these folks have taken a beating, and I think it's only fair to treat them appropriately after all they've been through. Thank you.
I recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
Question about that particular parcel. I believe that-
Excuse me. Can you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Michaela Moran, 80 School Street. I believe that parcel contains the foundation from the Knowlton Cigar Factory, and I'm wondering if anybody has asked the HC about its existence and whether they would allow a parking lot to be put there.
I don't know about this, and I would love to ask if somebody else does.
Do you have someone in mind, Ms. Osman?
Do, do you know about the Knowlton supplier? Or is there somebody in the room who wants to identify themselves as knowing?
Is either that one or the one right next to it? So I don't know where, where that cigar factory foundation is, but I thought it was right next to the, oops, maybe she knows.
The speaker at microphone number three, do you know the answer?
The cigar factory foundation is there, as far as I know. But I do, as I said, there's been no notification, so these kinds of questions should have been asked before we've been, we make an offer on a property that we have to use for parking only. Thank you.
I see no one else. Oop, I see one gentleman moving to a microphone. Gentleman at microphone number one.
Yes, hi. Ron Beck from 80 Estorbrook Road. So you attracted my interest when you talked about the stormwater. So just, I know no planning has happened on this, but I think that the idea of shunting water into the storm drain is not a good idea in this location. This is exactly why we, the new stormwater regulations were put in place, looking for recharge when at all possible. And I, so this whole area, you can see from the map, is wetlands, and if you look at where the West Acton Mall is, across the street there, you look at the existing embankment and parking lot, it does actually abut right up against the wetlands. See, when the water is high, like right now, you can see the water coming right up against the embankment. So additional loads coming down through the, through the, through storm drains are gonna put increasing load on the wetlands, which is exactly why the stormwater regulations are in place. So in actual fact, the town would need to come up with a solution that would either be something like pervious paving or else some sort of other recharge treatment solution like, like exists across the street. So there definitely would be additional expense in terms of stormwater treatment that would have to be engineered into the project.
Recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
Hi, George Berry-Martin Street. Just out of curiosity, I'm sorry to drag this out, but what would happen with this lot if we don't purchase it? Is it gonna get sold to developers? Is it gonna sit there? Is it gonna get looked at further for historical significance?
I don't know the answer. It's a private owner who offered it, so I don't know that. Thank you.
Okay, I see no one else standing, so we will vote. This is, requires a two-thirds vote, so we will vote by electronic means. So please turn on your clickers. Is everyone got their clickers turned on and ready to vote? We need to put 30 seconds up on the timer. Okay, remember, if you vote in favor of this, press the A button. To vote no, press the E button. The voting window is now open. I'm, I'm sorry, let's stop the vote. We have some people who are having a problem. Have you turned your clickers on? Are you sure your clickers are on? Are we okay now? Okay, let's, let's start again. Turn on your clickers. Turn them on. Does everybody have their clickers on? Okay? The voting window is now open. Everybody have their checkmark? Okay, the voting window is closed. It's fairly clear this required two-thirds, and the ayes do not have it. This motion fails. We will now move to Article 11, which initiates the first of the two consent agendas. This is the, what we think of as the financial consent agenda. These are Articles 11 through 18 in the warrant. The reason that they are placed on consent is that the selectmen believe that they are relatively non-controversial or routine in nature, and may be voted on together to try to expedite, expedite the business of town meeting. The process is as follows. I will first read the consent motion, obtain a second, and then we will discuss the procedure for handling the consent agenda, although- then we will discuss the procedure for handling the consent agenda, although it will be similar to what we have done in the past. So here's the motion under the consent calendar. Mr. Berry moves that the town take up the eight articles in the consent calendar on pages 46 through 53 of the warrant. Articles 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. Do I have a second? The procedure we'll follow is that I'll read the number and the title of each consent article. If someone wishes to hold the article from consent, they need to say "hold." If two or more say "hold," then the article will be held from consent and discussed and voted on separately. After Article 18 is read, we will vote on all articles remaining on the consent agenda. Then we will go back and discuss the hold articles one by one in the usual fashion. So I will now read each of the articles, and please say "hold" if you wish to hold them. Article 11, Accept Legislation Injury Leave Compensation Reimbursements. Article 12, Commuter Lot and Station Maintenance. Article 13, Septage Disposal Enterprise Budget. Article 14, Transfer Station and Recycling Enterprise Budget. Article 15, Sewer Enterprise Budget. Article 16, Ambulance Enterprise Budget. Article 17, Transportation Enterprise Fund.
Hold.
I hear one "hold." I hear two "holds." Article 17 is held. Article 18, Self-Funding Programs Revolving Funds. Okay, only Article 17 has been held. We will now take a vote, this is a majority vote, on the remaining articles, 11 through 16 and 18. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, say "nay." The motion carries unanimously. We will now move to Article 17. I will read the motion that pertains to Article 17, and then Ms. Osman will give a brief presentation. Ms. Osman moves that the town appropriate $574,477 for the purpose of operating the transportation service. That to meet this appropriation, $226,477 be raised from department receipts, $231,000 be raised from general revenues, and $117,000 be transferred from commuter lot parking fees fund balance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, Ms. Osman. Yes, speaker at microphone number two.
I'd like to, I'd like to know why the person held it, so maybe we can, it could be a shorter presentation.
Would one of the two people who held the article wish to state why they held it? Speaker at microphone number one.
This is Tara from West Acton, I was just being nice to Franny.
So I held it because I want, I wanna make sure that the town is fully aware of all the different things that we're doing transportation-wise. There's a lot of different things that go into it. There are some portions that some of the members of the FinCom don't feel like the town should be subsidizing, specifically the door-to-door services for people that are not disabled or aging. We have, we offer sort of $2 per ride services to anyone that wants a door-to-door service. And so we think that that is sort of a subsidy, because each of those rides can be upwards of $20, and it doesn't scale at all. In other words, if you get more door-to-door services, people riding it doesn't necessarily scale, because people are going to different places. And so you have big vans riding around that are carrying one or two people, which is also not environmentally that friendly. So that piece of it, I just wanna make sure people are aware that that is a service that we're providing, and that we're subsidizing that heavily.
Thank you. Osman, can you try and make this brief and address the comments that you just heard in terms of why the article was held?
I guess I can.
Thank you.
You know, I can talk all day about transportation, and-
And it's also getting rather late, so-
It is. I will go-
If it provides any incentive, I think we will probably move to adjourn as soon as this article is completed.
I will, what I will do, then, is go through and just focus on the dial-a-ride information, which is a shame. Because you were all going to learn all the ways you can use the cat bus, et cetera.
Well, Ms. Osman, you might point out that your entire presentation is on the town website, so if people are interested, they can be-
No, actually, the slides are, but what I was going to say isn't, but maybe I'll, whatever.
The longer we debate about this, the more frustrated people in the audience are getting-
No, I'm gonna, um-
Mr. Moderator, can I make one quick comment? The other reason I wanted to hold it is I actually do think that Franny should tell, at least tell everyone about the fixed route rail shuttle, I mean, the rail shuttle and the fixed route shuttle, because I think those are actually great things, so that was the other thing.
It's hard to go through, I'm just gonna read-
Ms. Osman, just, just go for it.
I'm just gonna, this is the third year that we've combined everything. I'm summarizing my notes, so you can be happy. We now have shared dispatch, which helps the systems be as efficient as possible. Most of the vans you see around are owned by Lowell Regional Transit Authority, and we hire a company to operate our services and to administer Cross-Town Connect, Transportation Management Association. And we know it would be cheaper to run some of these services if we have our own vehicles, and so we have actually requested a vehicle from Lowell Regional Transit Authority. And I have a dream of us purchasing an MV1. Look that up when you get home, an MV1. It's a small, it's a van that costs $45,000, and it can hold about five people and very easy ramp. And I think those are some ways that we can decrease the cost of our service. Who do we serve? We serve everybody. But who tends to use it? People who need it. If I can hop into my car right at my house and go somewhere without arranging for a ride or checking a schedule, I probably will, unless the service is right there and frequent. So it tends to be our more vulnerable populations. We supply library, fire, police services, and when people need the services, we provide them very well. I know, Margaret, you have wondered if there's alternatives such as Uber and Lyft to our on-demand services. There are, and in the not-so-distant future, there's gonna be autonomous vehicles. Are we ready to shut down our door-to-door services and depend on them yet? No, that will happen when the following three things are true. When people and technology have evolved so that all people have access to the technology needed to call the car service, and appropriate subsidies are built into the system. When there are handicapped accessible vehicles equally available through these Uber and Lyft-type programs, so that we can fulfill our federal requirement to provide equal service to people with disabilities. And when Uber and Lyft-type services are all-around, so that we can depend on their availability, and that's improving day-to-day, I've noticed. We also share dispatch, which lets us take advantage of other towns' services, such as hospital trips on regular days of the week. It's not just people with obvious disabilities that have to be helped. I won't go through the ridership, it's generally been going up. It's gone up 28% in the last two years for the door-to-door services. Fixed route services, which include the rail shuttle and Cross Acton Transit, the cat bus, and the new Maynard shuttle, which has been phenomenally successful, have gone up a lot also. The rail shuttle has gone up 40%, and it's actually even higher than it looks on that graph, it's gone up to about 4,000 this quarter. I won't be satisfied until we provide commuter service not just from these nearby lots, but from Route 2A in North Acton, so people don't have to bring their car into the equation at all. There is a grant that Cross-Town Connect has, but we're working on the vehicle and driver situation for that. I know, one of the things that, Margaret, you're probably concerned about is the $231,000 tax subsidy of this article. I mean, years ago, we spent $50,000 to have just a council on aging van, and we've added a lot of these services since then. $128,000 of the $231,000 is spent on the door-to-door services, and there subsidized less than the fixed route, where we can get money from the Regional Transit Authority, and we can get parking lot income to defray the cost. Door-to-door also requires an individualized route management, and it serves the most vulnerable people. Who does it serve? 57% of the door-to-door riders are self-described seniors, 10% require lifts to get in and out of the vans, and 33% represent a vulnerable section of the population, people with invisible disabilities, nondisclosed disabilities. People call up and ask for a ride, they don't say, "Could you tell me about your health? Could you tell me about, do you have any disabilities?" They have young people who don't have someone to drive them around, such as a non-working parent. Economically disadvantaged people, such as whose car breaks down and they can't afford to fix it. There are a lot of reasons why people use public transportation. They don't use it unless they need it. They don't tend to. And the rest of my presentation was about the cat bus, which you can go to crossactontransit.com and see the bus running around, because there's a live tracker. And it goes to businesses and residences that are in dense areas to try to help as many people as possible. And I had this wonderful tape of a woman who takes it because it gives her freedom. She used to use the dial-a-ride, and she does use that sometimes, but she says, she lives in subsidized housing in Acton, and she says this gives her the flexibility to just get up in the morning and say, "Oh, I think I'm gonna go shopping at Kmart today." "Oh, I think I'm gonna go over to Donalyn's," and she can decide when, because she knows that that cat bus is coming around. We have a lot of input from people, and I hope that we continue to. We have a new service, which is the Maynard shuttle, and it goes by the Parker Street Apartments, which I'm very happy that we're helping people out in South Acton now, and Acton is providing about 10% of the cost of that shuttle. And I just wanna tell you that there's a forum on train ridership and parking availability hosted by the South Acton Train Station Advisory Committee and Senator Jamie Eldridge. That forum is gonna be held in Town Hall, Room 204, next Wednesday, 12th of April, at 7:30. And the cat bus continues to need your help in trying it out, sending your kids, tell them to walk over to Kmart or Roach Brothers and use the cat bus to get to the library or to get home or to go to a class. It needs that added push. But all programs, especially fixed routes in a non-dense town, have that challenge. So I ask for your help in that challenge, and I ask for your support in this transportation enterprise budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osman. I assume in asking for the support that you are indicating the Board of Selectmen as a group recommend this article.
Yes, not just me, the Board of Selectmen unanimously supports this article.
I'll turn to the Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation on this article?
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends this article.
Thank you. Town meeting members, comments, questions? Recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Okay, this is Lisa Franklin, I'm speaking for the Acton Commission on Disabilities, and I know that people are not objecting to the concept of people with disabilities taking transportation, but I would like to remind you that if we don't fund this, these are the people who are gonna be hurt. For over 40 years now, we have been working on getting people with disabilities out of institutions and into total community inclusion, and throughout that entire 40 years, transportation has been one of the biggest handicaps to our, reaching our goal. And even if I wasn't disabled, I can't afford a car. So, Margaret, if you want to give me your phone number, I'll put you on my volunteer driver list.
I recognize speaker at microphone number one. Yes, you.
Good evening, good evening. It's nice to see everyone here. My name is Peter Farmer, I live at 28 Captain Brown's Lane in Acton. We have a 21-year-old daughter who is disabled, she can't drive, she can't really travel by herself. Instead of limiting transportation, I have encouraged us to look beyond just Acton. Currently, when my 21-year-old daughter wants to meet her older sister, I have to drive to Concord and wait at the, at the restaurant so she can get on a service called The Ride, and it goes from Concord to Brookline where her sister is. So instead of just limiting transportation, I ask that we somehow find a way to merge what we offer here in Acton with other services to expand the reach for older Acton residents that are disabled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Joan Burrows, Elm Street.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Speaker number one, yes.
I was waiting, but you did. Okay, I wouldn't be here tonight if it weren't for the bus, because my eyes aren't good enough to drive at night anymore, unfortunately. As you age, you sometimes, things like that happen. But I know a lot of other people that use this transportation in Acton. Acton is a great town to live in, and I think if we curtail transportation, it's gonna be really, really sad for a lot of people that can't get out, including a friend of mine who broke an ankle on the ice and was limited, could not drive for a car. So there's many, many uses for the vans.
We seem to all be lined up at microphone number one. The next speaker.
Lucia Hicks, Sawmill Road. I have a car I can drive, I'm not disabled, I'm perfectly capable of making my own way around. I am also a big believer in public transportation, sustainability, green solutions, and all of those good things. I never use public transportation, I never use the train to go into Boston or Cambridge because it's such a pain in the butt. I live in North Acton, the train is in South Acton, I have to drive my car over there, pray that I can find a parking space, pray that there's enough stray change on the bottom of my car to feed the meter, so I never do it. If there were a, if there were a regular bus or van or whatever that went from, let's say, Nara, I'd walk over to Nara and take the bus, I could at least, walk over to Nara and take the bus over to the train, and I might go into town more often.
Thank you. And one more speaker at microphone number one.
Tara, just to clarify, I thought Franny wanted to hold and give her presentation, so I was seconding her, sorry, Margaret, I wasn't, because I was objecting. The concept of public transportation in Acton has grown on me, mainly because we have invited a lot of people here, and we now have, I believe, hundreds of people who need help, that we have enjoyed the quote-unquote "new tax revenues" of development, and now it's our social responsibility to serve the folks that have come here. And if, even if it's only a few hundred people, that's, that would be about the same as what we pay to serve everybody else. So if you said, "The seniors are 20%, and so we need a senior center, and the kids are 40%, we need schools," well, how about the folks that don't really ask for much else except for transportation? I think that we should fund this, I think that, yes, Franny, please, look into these mini-whatever and the EV and- I think that, yes, Franny, please, look into these mini-whatever and the EV and the solar whatever. Yeah, go for it, you know? But I'm gonna say that I feel at this point it's our responsibility to provide this. So I'm voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else standing, so we will vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, please say "nay." The motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Berry.
At this point, I would move to adjourn this meeting until tomorrow night, April 4th, at 6:45 PM.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, say "nay." We are adjourned. Thank you.